All right, I'm going to call to order this evening's meeting for the special meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency for the City of Salem for May 27, 2014. Would the recorder please call the roll?
Board Member Bennett is absent and sitting in for him tonight is guest board member, Mr. Calliope White. Board Member Tesler?
Present.
Board Member Nanki?
Here.
Board Member Claussen?
Here.
Board Member Dickey?
Here.
Board Member Rogers?
Here.
Board Member Benars?
Here.
Board Member Clem?
Here.
Chair Peterson?
Here.
Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, Counselor Brad Nanki is acting as our council president. Thank you so much for -- appreciate you taking this extra position, which also involves work away from these chambers, and I especially appreciate that you've been doing that and are willing to do that for the next couple of weeks. Do you have a motion regarding the special meeting agenda?
I do, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move the special meeting agenda for the Urban Renewal Agency on May 27, 2014.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor Benars to move the special meeting agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We have public comment this evening. Has anyone signed up? No one has signed up. This is the special meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency. Was there anyone in the audience who had intended to sign up to speak during this session of the evening's proceedings? All right, seeing none, we will move to the public hearing. Would the recorder please introduce that?
The Urban Renewal Agency will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony on the budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2014, as approved by the Urban Renewal Agency Budget Committee.
Thank you very much. And is there a staff report or a presentation? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Peterson, and thank you. I'm Kelly Jacobs, the city's budget officer, and I have a very brief report. The Urban Renewal Agency Budget Committee recommended a budget to the agency board on April 23, 2014. The agency board is required to hold a public hearing on the recommended budget. In compliance with state budget law, this evening's public hearing was noticed in the Statesman Journal on May 19, 2014. Following the public hearing, staff recommends the Urban Renewal Agency Board deliberate on the budget committee recommended budget and direct staff to return on June 23, 2014 with a resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2014-15 Urban Renewal Agency Budget. At that meeting, staff may request the agency board amend the fiscal year 2014-15 budget approval made this evening to include any rebudgeted purchase orders or carryover projects from the fiscal year 2013-14 budget, which staff are currently identifying. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Counselor Nanki, do you have a motion?
Do we have any members of the public?
Do we have any public testimony? Okay.
I know friends of Urban Renewal are filling the chambers.
Apparently not. We don't have anyone signed up either for this item. Was there anyone in the audience that had intended to sign up for the Urban Renewal Agency budget discussion? All right, seeing none. All right. Counselor Nanki, do you have a motion? Do we do a motion with this?
We do.
All right, I'll close the hearing. All right. Now, do we have a motion or discussion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I would move to have direct staff to return with a resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2014-2015 Urban Renewal Agency budget as provided to us by the Budget Committee.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor Benars to recommend the 14-15 budget to direct staff to return with a resolution to adopt the 14-15 Urban Renewal Agency budget. Is there a discussion? Counselor Clem?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just for members of the public, this goes into effect first of July and goes through June 30 of next year, and it really is about a lot of neighborhood renewal, downtown renewal, revitalization efforts, and if I'm reading this correctly, it's about $27 million worth of work. So, we haven't really discussed any numbers here, but please know that there have been numerous meetings and discussions in the public about this budget. And so, if you are interested to see what we're doing with Urban Renewal, please check the website and the agenda for tonight's meeting. But there are a lot of numbers, and they all add up to about $47 million altogether. So, it is extensive and it is impactful, not only on the neighborhoods, but as well the riverfront downtown area.
Thank you very much.
And potentially McGillchrist.
Other -- yes, eventually. Other comments by counselors? All right. There's a motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, we have no further business to come before the Urban Renewal Agency, and All right. I'd like to call to order this evening's meeting of the Salem City Council for May 27, 2014. Would the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Bennett is absent, and sitting in for him tonight is guest Counselor, Mr. Calliope White. Counselor Tesler?
Present.
Counselor Nanki?
Here.
Counselor Claussen?
Here.
Counselor Dickey?
Here.
Counselor Rogers?
Here.
Counselor Benars?
Here.
Counselor Clem?
Here.
Mayor Peterson?
Present, thank you. All right. Ask for a motion to approve the additions and deletions to the agenda. Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move additions, deletions, revisions to the agenda per the sheet that was handed out to everyone. That includes a couple of items for public hearings that'll be brought to attention during that time, as well as a special order of business addition on the World War II Memorial Project and an information report on accepting a SWAT vehicle for the Salem Police Department.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor Tesler to approve the additions and deletions to the agenda. Are there any questions or discussion? We're ready for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We now have time for council and city manager comment. Are there counselors who would like to provide a comment this evening? Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to give kudos to Public Works. We were having an issue at work today, and our flow meter all of a sudden read four times what our normal discharge volume was, and so there was a clog in the line. There was a VAC truck jetter out there in less than 15 minutes, and it was determined that it was not the seduce problem, it was our lateral. But just the responsiveness was wonderful, so thanks to all the Public Works folks.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thanks for saying that. Others? City Manager?
Oh, Counselor Tesler.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Tesler?
Thank you. I just wanted to say to Public Works that the mitigation wetlands that you did in the Fairview industrial areas are really, really great this time of year especially. We've been really enjoying going over there and walking around the ponds. There's a beaver pond there, and there's also a native prairie restoration site as well that has a lot of Nelson's checkermallow, which is an endangered plant. There's people keeping lists of birds where I work, and people have seen over 45 different species of birds there, including a Sora, which is a kind of rare wading bird, and lots of really nice waterfowl. So, the ponds are working great, and thank you because it's a really good example of a small area that can really provide a lot of biological benefit in the middle of pretty much an industrial area. So, good job on the constructed prairie and the wetlands. They're really diverse and working great.
That's wonderful. I'm going to have to go out and take a look at those because I remember being out there when your building first opened. You have to come and see now that things are really established. That's great. Thank you. Other comments by counselors? All right. City Manager?
I do have a couple of things, Mayor. Thank you. One is council may recall that we submitted a grant to the EPA about a year ago to get some funding for environmental assessments on underutilized sites citywide, and I'm happy to announce that we've just been told we won the grant for $200,000 that can be used for Phase I and II environmental assessments on private or publicly owned brownfields or other underutilized sites citywide, and it can only be used for sites that are suspected to be contaminated with hazardous substances, including lead, asbestos, or other non-petroleum substances. So, we'll be getting more information about that out in the city's website, and also we'll have information in this week's management report for council. And you may -- this was a late addition, so you may not have had time to review that, but the SWAT vehicle that we will be getting from surplus military equipment is a value of about $800,000, and we'll be getting it for free, which will replace our old SWAT vehicle that has needed to be replaced for some time. It's no cost to the city, and it has a two-year warranty, so we're very grateful to be receiving that equipment, which will be of great use to our police department.
That's wonderful. Other comments? All right, thank you very much. We'll now move to the public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment? And this is for items on the agenda other than public hearings and deliberations. I see that we have four people signed up. We'll begin with Jim Shepke followed by Tyler Lindsey. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Jim Shepke. I reside in Ward 2, and I'm speaking on behalf of No Third Bridge. We're a group that's been actively working against the third bridge since September of 2012, and we wanted to comment tonight on Agenda Item 3.3A, specifically a grant request for $150,000 to create a plan for the bridgeheads when and if a third bridge gets built. In our opinion, such a planning effort is premature. You shouldn't be planning for the bridgeheads until there's a viable plan for the bridge, and the most important component is that of a viable funding plan. We all decry the waste of millions of federal dollars on planning for the Columbia River Crossing in Portland. In hindsight, it was a mistake to spend all those millions of dollars before a viable funding plan was in place. In the end, there was no viable funding plan, and the governor had to pull the plug. We believe that you and your other local government partners are making the same mistake. There is no viable funding plan in place for the third bridge, and yet you have already spent five or six million dollars, including staff time, on planning studies, and tonight you will decide on requesting a grant to spend 150,000 more in the total absence of a viable funding plan for a third bridge. Before you vote tonight to submit this grant request, we would request that you at least have a conversation in front of the citizens who are here tonight and watching on TV about funding for the third bridge. Please acknowledge the fact that there will be little or no state or federal money for this project. What are your ideas about local funding for the third bridge? Are you willing to ask Salem citizens to raise their property taxes by hundreds of dollars a year to fund it? Are you willing to place tolls on the Marion and Center Street bridges to fund it? Please, at least have the conversation before deciding to ask for a grant for a project that will likely never be built because no one wants to pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Shepke? Thank you. And Tyler Lindsey followed by Scott Snyder.
First of all, I just really appreciate all your hard work on a nightly basis, all that you do, so thank you so much. I'm against the third bridge. I live in the neighborhood on Hope Avenue with Canard there, and my wife and I are just concerned about property taxes rising, also our house values going down if this project goes through. Also with the neighborhood, it's a great place to live, safe place for kids. We get a lot of foot traffic because of the park down there, and so that's a huge concern my wife and I have, just the safety of the children, of our children going up there, and also just the amount of traffic that we go through if that bridge does go through with the noise level on a nightly basis. Right now, we just have a two-month-old, which we're not getting much sleep to begin with, but we're hoping to expand our family, and just a great neighborhood, it's a great place to raise a family. Really don't want to see that change with a bridge coming in and more traffic coming in. So, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Lindsey? Counselor Tesler?
Thanks for coming down. I do appreciate you coming and voicing your concerns. I'd like to ask you, have you talked to any of the city's staff about the impact that the bridge may have or how the bridge may impact your neighborhood?
I have not. I have not spent time talking to two city members.
Okay. I would really encourage you to seek out, I believe one of the people is here tonight, Julie Warnicki is a wonderful person, and sit down and talk to you sometime and just kind of get some for-real facts about how the bridge may affect you. It's always good to research both sides of the issue, and our staff is more than willing to talk to you and explain, answer any questions that you may have, and give you the information that you need to make decisions. But I do appreciate you coming down tonight. I would encourage you to get in touch with city staff. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. We do appreciate you taking time to come. Scott Snyder followed by Emily Lowberg. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and City Council. Thanks for having this meeting tonight. I'm here to speak in support of Item 7A, the Cultural Tourism Advisory Board Annual Report. I hope that you've had an opportunity to look through the information there. I think the city has done an outstanding job of helping to support new and existing events that are going on in Salem, as well as just the assets that we have on a regular basis to not only keep our citizens engaged, but to have things for our out-of-town travelers. I manage the hotel downtown here, the Grand Hotel, and am constantly helping to refer our guests to attractions in the community. My front desk staff is also encouraged to learn more about what's going on through Travel Salem, the weekly events calendar that comes out, so that they can keep our guests engaged in what's going on and how they can keep themselves occupied. And just really am very supportive of the city manager's recommendation for the budget that you'll be approving tonight, and would welcome any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to take a moment to say thank you to you also, Scott, for chairing the advisory board and for the leadership that you've shown in the years that I've been mayor. You've really helped bring to our attention the work of that board, as well as the, I think, very high-quality work that's coming from the board.
Well, thank you very much, and I want to just also acknowledge, we've had several new members on our advisory board this last year, and fresh ideas, fresh perspectives, and so it's obviously always a learning curve involved with a new person, but the new and fresh ideas are welcome, and we're excited about the coming year. So, thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you. I'm just going to take a moment to read the names of the other members of the committee. Kathryn Jarman-Miller is vice chair, Greg Astley, Cora Fisher, Javier Navarro, Kenji Sugahara, Matisse -- I hope I'm saying that right.
Matisse.
Matisse DeDios? DeDios?
Yes.
Tiffany Partridge, and Tara Hurdle.
Yes.
So, we pass along to all of them our appreciation for their service as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Emily Lowberg.
My name is Emily Lowberg. I live in Ward 1, and I'm here tonight to urge you not to approve the Transportation Growth Management Program Grant for the Salem River Crossing Integrated Land Use Plan for the Bridge Districts. I believe that the intent and language of the grant application are contrary to the stated goals of the Transportation and Growth Management Project, which include expanding transportation choices that work with local government to create vibrant, livable places in which people can walk, bike, take transit, or drive where they want to go. Thus, the purpose of the Transportation and Growth Management Project is to fund projects that remove the need for projects like bridges and highways rather than reduce the impact of their implementation and the projects they create retroactively. Throughout the application for the grant, the intent of improving the neighborhoods in the Bridgehead Districts is described, including plans to ensure that the areas benefit, to create positive change, and to strengthen the identity, character, and economic vitality of the Bridge Districts. However, this language in the grant application refuses to acknowledge the fact that putting a large-scale bridge and highway in a neighborhood fundamentally harms its identity, character, and economic vitality, especially when it must displace families and businesses. The high volumes of fast-moving traffic would also harm these neighborhoods. A project that detracts from livability and incentivizes passive transportation cannot be part of livability improvements, including expanding active transportation choices within the Bridge Districts as the grant proposes to do. Please do not support this contradictory grant application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from counselors? All right, thank you. We appreciate you coming down and testifying. Was there anyone else in the audience who had intended to sign up for the speaker's roster for this section of public comment? All right, thank you very much.
Mayor, there was someone over here.
Is there someone?
Yeah.
Will you please come to the microphone and introduce yourself? You get it? Okay.
Is this one live? Okay. Thank you, by the way, for allowing comments for those who didn't have a chance to sign up. My name's Douglas Morgan, and I'm a resident of Ward 2, and like the previous resident of our fair city, I urge the council to disapprove the proposed grant application for the third bridge planning study. I'm a new resident of the area, and my family and I moved to our residential neighborhood. We bought a home there. We're business owners, and we moved to this locality and purchased a home on this space because, well, because of the safety of the neighborhood, the comfort of the neighborhood, and the congeniality of the neighborhood. And clearly, if this plan goes forward as proposed, it will change all of those factors and, in essence, be antithetical to why we moved here. So, as should be clearly apparent otherwise, it will, if it moves forward, it will make negative impacts on individuals like us, as well as my many neighbors, many of whom I've talked with about this issue, and I've yet to discover one who is in favor of the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions by counselors? All right, we appreciate you coming down. Thank you very much. I'm going to ask the gentlemen who are standing, will you please find chairs? We do have a council preference that we have everyone in a chair during the meetings. Thank you so much. All right, we'll move to the consent calendar. Counselor Nanki, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move the consent calendar as presented.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor Benars to move the consent calendar. Counselor Dickey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to pull Item 3.3A for discussion.
All right. 3.3A.
So, would I just amend the motion?
With the following poll, 3.3A by Counselor Dickey.
All right, okay. Thank you. Were there any other polls for this section? All right. All those in favor of the motion to adopt the consent calendar with the exception of the one poll of Item 3.3A signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, we have a couple of public hearings this evening. Actually, we have four public hearings this evening, so we're going to get started, and I will ask the people to kind of help us move along the public hearing. I like to call two names at once. We have both podiums live and available, and if people can kind of position themselves so that when one person is through talking, the next one is ready to be introduced. It really does help reduce some of the delay. Appreciate your help with that. All right, our first public hearing, would the recorder please introduce the public hearing?
The city council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony on council review of consolidated comprehensive plan change, neighborhood plan change, zone change, conditional use, zoning adjustment, site plan review case number 1402. This will be a new hearing and will result in a decision that supersedes that rendered by the planning commission. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward applicable criteria found in Salem revised code 64.025E2, 265.005E, 240.005D, 250.0052D -- I'm sorry, excuse me, D2, and 220.005F3. Testimony may also address any other criteria a person believes applies to the decision. The record of the planning commission action with respect to this request is part of the record before council. Failure to raise an issue in a hearing in person or by letter, or failure to provide statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to the Land use Board of Appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court.
Thank you very much. And do we have a staff presentation?
Good evening. I'm Brian Colborne, a planner with the Community Development Department, and tonight I'll be presenting the staff report for the city council review of this consolidated case number 1402 located at 2630 Church Street Northeast. At this time, I'd like to enter the case file, the staff report, and the additional neighborhood testimony into the case record. The subject property in this case is a 0.6-acre site that includes an existing building of approximately 11,400 square feet in floor area, and it's located within the Highland Neighborhood Association. This is an aerial photo showing the subject property and the surrounding development patterns. You can see most of the surrounding development is single-family residential. Immediately to the south, there is a group-living building, and then about a block and a half to the east, there's the Oregon State School for the Death. About two blocks to the west, just off this aerial photo, is Broadway Street with several apartment buildings. The proposal before you is a request to change the site's zoning so that room-and-board facilities would be in allowed use on the property, and to reduce the required parking on the site. There's been a lot of talk in the testimony submitted about instances of crime and poor property management at the site. I've walked through the property myself, and yes, I would agree that the property myself, and yes, I would agree that there are several things that need to be fixed and improved in this building. But those, those are matters that are addressed by our fire department and by our Neighborhood Enhancement Division that does code enforcement, and in the instance of crime, by our police department. And those are addressed by those separate departments regardless of the outcome of this zoning application. So, it's important to recognize that the question that was before the Planning Commission when they approved this application, and the question that's before the City Council, the City Council this evening, is the question of whether this is an appropriate rezoning and appropriate use for the site, and not whether the specific tenants or current management is behaving correctly. The current management and problems with the individual tenants are just simply not directly relevant to the criteria, the approval criteria that are under review in this hearing this evening. Staff recommends approval of the request because with proper management, a room and board facility is a logical propose, proposal for the productive reuse of this unique property that could otherwise sit vacant and deteriorate. Now, another issue that was raised in the testimony that is, that it was, that it was taken too long for the city to attend to the zoning violation that exists at the property. With hindsight, yes, there were some things that the city could have done differently to make this a faster process, and I'm gonna speak to the timeline of events in just a moment. But even with, even if the matter would have been processed faster, staff believes that we would be here this evening making the same recommendation that we're making tonight. So with that, I thought it'd be best to spend this opportunity, most of the presentations evening, just going through, walking through the history of this, of this case with you and how we arrived at where we are today. So, in 1953, Magnolia Manor Nursing Home was constructed at the site. The building was built for institutional type of occupancy. In 2004, Magnolia Manor Nursing Home ceased operations, and after operating for decades as a non-conforming use within the single-family residential RS zone, the, in 2006, excuse me, the YWCA proposed an emergency shelter for families in the building. Now, this use is classified as a residential care facility, which, like the previous nursing home, was not allowed, an allowed use in the RS zoning at that time. Because this is a unique property and the city was faced, basically with a similar question that we're faced with tonight, this challenge of trying to find an appropriate use for this unique property. And so, ultimately, the City Council approved the rezone of the property from single-family residential to multifamily residential RM1 in 2006 to accommodate the YWCA proposal. And that allowed the residential care facility proposal of the Y. There was concern raised, however, at that time by the neighbors, that the building not be converted to apartments should the YWCA not, not materialize. And therefore, the council placed a condition on the rezone in 2006 prohibiting apartments at the site. So, as a result, the property now is zoned a multifamily residential RM1, but has a condition that prohibits apartments. In addition to the rezone, the city also approved a parking variance in 2006 to accommodate the YWCA proposal, but ultimately, the YWCA proposal did not materialize, and the property remained vacant. In March 2008, the current owners purchased the property, and by May of 2008, the new owners had rented out most of the rooms in the building to individual tenants. In May 2008, a city code enforcement officer visited the property in response to junk and weeds observed at the site, and then opened a compliance case after observing residents in the building. Code enforcement then learned that there were already approximately 30 residents in, within the building's 28 rooms without approval and in violation of the property zoning. City staff met with the owner at that time and discussed how to classify this use. There was likely discussion with the owner. The owner brought forward different ideas of how the city could amend the code to allow adaptive reuse of buildings like this one, this one, and potentially citywide in similar cases. And, and there were other ideas that were discussed at that time. Ultimately, the city staff classified the, the, the use as a room and board facility, and that's the type of use that's in our code that basically is a, a group living situation where there's no code, there's no care, excuse me, being provided to the residents. So, room and board facility is, was the classification given. And staff recommended also at that time that a code amendment be pursued that would allow room and board facilities up to 30 residents like this, this one, within the RM1 zone city, citywide. Now, one reason the city staff chose the code amendment as a solution to this zoning violation was that we had just gone through the site-specific rezone of the site to accommodate the YWCA proposal. And so, that process left us with the property rezoned RM1 with this condition that, you know, prohibited the apartments, as I said. And so, I think it was likely felt at that time that if there was a problem with finding a use for this building, it was, it may be a larger problem than just this property, and, and potentially it deserved a citywide solution. And so, that was kind of the thinking behind this code amendment solution that we embarked on in, in 2008. With hindsight, pursuing the citywide code amendment was, was a mistake, and it was this decision that, to pursue the citywide code amendment to try and help this one unique building to find an appropriate use that ultimately led to it taking so long to attempt at the zoning violation. Now, in 2009, a code amendment, the code amendment was drafted, and in fall of 2009, the, the code amendment was, as I said, drafted, and we, as staff, started the outreach process. The code amendment specifically allowed room and board facilities up to 30 residents to be permitted use within the RM1 zone citywide. The Highland Neighborhood Association was, was supportive of the idea. We did an outreach to additional neighborhood associations, and they were all supportive of the idea. There was no opposition raised at that time. In May of 2010, the Planning Commission heard public testimony and adopted a recommendation that the City Council approve the code amendment. In the fall of 2010, city staff recommended that the code amendment, we kind of took a bit of a detour at this stage. We recommended that that code amendment be wrapped together with several other similar standalone code amendments into the UDC or Unified Development Code Project, which was just getting off the, off the ground. And so, that code, the code amendment was wrapped into the UDC in, in 2010. Meanwhile, in, about the same time, in September of 2010, a fire sprinkler test company informed the city of poor conditions within the building and a malfunctioning fire sprinkler system. In response to this, fire, regular fire life and safety inspections of the property have commenced, and so that crucial safety items such as the fire sprinklers could be regularly inspected, and they have been inspected ever, ever since that, that time. In February of 2012, the UDC Advisory Committee recommended removing the room and board code amendment from the scope of the UDC project. And in May of 2012, city staff began a new outreach process, started, sort of started over again, and began new outreach for the standalone code amendment. Neighborhood outreach for the, about the room and board code amendment was conducted with the city's neighborhood associations throughout 2012. And towards the end of 2012, two neighborhood associations voiced opposition to the code amendment. The Highland Neighborhood Association, however, which represents the subject property that started all of this, was still supportive at this stage. In response to the neighborhood opposition, city staff abandoned the code amendment process that would have increased the number of residents allowed in room and board facilities in, in the multifamily zone citywide, and instead recommended that the property owners pursue a site-specific solution, a site-specific rezone of, of this, this property. And what that would do, it was, it would increase the number of residents allowed in a room and board facility for this property only. And then in October of 2013, the consolidated rezone application that's before you this evening was submitted to the city. And in, on February 11th of 2014, the Planning Commission held its public hearing, and opposition was raised by the immediate neighbors. This was the first time that the Planning Division staff and the Highland Neighborhood Association had heard opposition to, to the facility from the immediate neighbors in, in just February of this year. Despite the opposition, the Planning Commission ultimately approved the rezone, and that then led to tonight's council review hearing. So, as you can see, essentially, we were on the wrong path with the code amendment process. We were on that path for several years. Now, we're on the right path with the re, site-specific rezone solution to this. And Planning Commission agreed with that, approved, approved the, the, the site-specific rezone. It's important to also recognize that city staff, from the very beginning, when we realized that this use occupied this building, we recognized that a room and board facility really was a good, a pretty good use for this, for this unique site. It was just a matter of how do you get there to, to, to allow this, this adaptively reuse this building? And so, that's, that's really why, even though there was a code violation all this time, we didn't take any enforcement action, is because the applicant was actively working with us throughout this whole period to resolve the zoning matter and make the use legal. And so, now, I'm just gonna go through, because it's a bit of a complicated application. I'm gonna just close here with going through the, the different pieces of the application. There's six parts. There's a comprehensive plan change, a neighborhood plan change, and a zone change. And that, what that accomplishes, seeks to accomplish, is to change the zoning from RM1 multifamily residential to CO, commercial office. Now, this is a zoning map showing the location of the subject property. One of the, one of the items that was raised in the testimony was questioning whether the rezone creates a logical pattern of land use designations, because as you can see here, there really isn't any immediately adjacent commercial, commercially zoned land on this, for this property. Normally, you know, commercial here, by the way, is, is represented by the pink and the, and the, and the red. So, you know, this is commercial. This would be commercial. This is all residential, where you see the, the yellow and the orange. So, normally, commercial office at this location would, would not be considered a logical pattern of zoning. However, in this case, the commercial office zoning will have a condition limiting the uses to only residential uses, those residential uses that are currently allowed under the RM1 zoning, plus the addition of one use, that is, the, the room and board facility serving up to 30 persons. So, so it's, it's, it's a CO zone, but really, it does not allow any of the typical commercial office uses such as an office building to be built under our recommendation. And then finally, the, the three final pieces of the request are a conditional use to allow the room and board facility. There's also a request to reduce the number of required parking spaces for this type of use, so that the room and board facility can simply use the existing eight parking spaces that are on the site without having to tear down, you know, adjacent buildings and, and increase the impact of the, of the project. And then finally, there's a site plan review, which is also required, which is the standard requirement with any change of, change of use such as this. So, staff's recommendation is to approve the request, affirm the Planning Commission's approval of the request, and with the three conditions that the Planning Commission put in place, and that is that the uses be limited to only those uses that are currently allowed on the, under the residential zoning, plus the addition of room and board facilities up to 30 persons, a trip cap of no more than 112 average daily trips, and the provision of a bike rack on the property. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your very thorough presentation and your slides. We're now going to proceed to the signup sheet for testimony. And again, please, if you will, help me by being ready at, at both microphones. Our process is to first hear from the applicant or the applicant's representative, and that person will have 10 minutes. And following that, the, if the Neighborhood Association has a representative here, we'd like to be sure who that is, and that person would have five minutes. Following that, all others on the signup sheet would have three minutes, and there'll be a rebuttal at the end for five minutes. So, again, as I like to try to do, if you're in the audience and you had wanted to sign up to testify for this section of the hearing, and you're not on the sheet, please don't be shy. There'll be a moment at the end of those that are on the list, so that anyone in addition can have time to testify as well. Alright, we're gonna start. Mr. Shipman, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of the council for the record. Mark Shipman. I'm a land use attorney with Southfield Griggs, 250 Church Street, Southeast, Suite 300, here in Salem, Oregon, 97301. I'm here this evening on behalf of the applicant and property owner in this matter. This is a complex and application that has truly taken a convoluted path that I don't think any of us would have anticipated when we initially started working with staff on trying to figure out just a, a way to be able to allow this use to be used as it's currently being used. We agree with the staff report and respectfully request that you approve the different applications that we've submitted tonight, subject to the conditions of approval the staff have outlined for you. There's going to be a number of people that'll be speaking tonight in opposition, and so, I'm just gonna tell you that right up front. They're gonna speak a lot to how this property's been mismanaged, a lot to, with respect to how many of the tenants that have been in the building have, have been disrespectful to them as neighbors. And these are, these concerns they have are meaningful, they're valid, and they're concerns that I share. I believe that the bulk of these concerns are related to a prior bad manager that was a site manager on the subject property that the property manager had in place. That manager has been removed, and we believe that that situation has been taken care of. As staff indicated to you, there is a path going forward that involves approving this request with the proposed conditions of approval. And that really does, I think, an important thing, both for, for the city and for the neighborhood. And that really allows and forces the property owner to complete all the necessary permit applications and approvals outside of the zoning applications, because there's a different, there's additional applications and permit approvals that they need to see. And that will allow them to go through that process and be able to broaden, to be in compliance with all city codes and requirements. At this time, I'm happy to address any questions that you might have. Otherwise, I'll reserve time for rebuttal. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony. Are there questions from councilors? Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for coming down, Mr. Shipman. Question on parking. Throughout town, we hear one space per, you know, one and a half, two, but this comes out to like .25 parking spaces per dwelling unit or resident. How, how can that be justified?
It's justified in a, primarily, Counselor Nanki, in this, in that the, the majority of the residents that live there don't have vehicles. And so, they're either taking the bus, they're taking taxi cabs. When I was there for, I've been there for several times in various site visits. They also are there being transported to and from by, by friends and family. You have, you have parking, you can't see this quite well with the, the subject property map, but there is, there is parking on, on Church Street directly in front of the facility, and there actually is parking on Locust Street. Also, I believe, on the, the south side of Locust Street there. So, there's actually, and we've, in our application statement, I can't remember how many spots we counted up, but when you add up all the parallel parking that's in the area, you take a look at the fact that most of the residents are, are being, are being transported to and from by either taxi friends or by the bus. Staff has required, is one of the conditions of approval, that we add additional bike, bike racks there as well as the required by code. And that gets us to the, to the, the parking adjustment.
Okay.
The parking adjustment, this parking adjustment's really no different than what, what was previously approved for the YWCA. We're, we're following suit in that, in that manner.
Slightly different use, though.
Maybe. Maybe.
Councilor Clausen, you had a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Shipman, thanks for the testimony. Asking maybe for a little bit of education, I'm going to ask staff the same question. Why is this room-and-board, quote-unquote, room-and-board, and not a single-bedroom apartment or flat type of building? What makes that differentiation? Is it common kitchen? Is it cafeteria-style meals being served? Or, I don't understand that.
Common kitchen.
Common kitchen makes it room-and-board. So, it's not that there's a cook who's making meals for the complex?
No.
So, it's not that, not like you've got room and board, like a bed and breakfast type of thing?
Not at all. It's a common kitchen that's shared by all the residents.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Benars?
On the same line, I think, as Councilor Nanki, I would like to ask a little bit more in reference to the parking situation. In this report, one of the conditions of grant that the hearings officer had given was to provide a single four-stall parking for bicycle. So, if we've got eight parking stalls and four bicycle stalls, we don't have very many stalls, period, whether they're on their feet or going by bus or by bicycle. I would say that something a little bit more than four would be needed to carry that number of people myself. I think it's inadequate parking for, and I know that the rest of the neighbors can't count on on-street parking. It's not something you can count on your business. It's something that, it's shared by everybody in the neighborhood, because it's not reserved. So, I believe there's a need for more additional off-street parking than what has been talked about so far in the conditions.
Councilor Dickey.
Thank you. I also would ask staff this, but they mentioned one of the conditions as being 112 trip cap. Can you explain what your understanding of that is and how the property would intend to stick to that?
What we did, Councilor Dickey, is we engaged a traffic engineer to do a traffic, essentially a traffic analysis for us to be in compliance with the transportation planning role. And with that, what they determined is based on the number of residents that would be there, that I believe during the peak hour, there would be no more than 112 trips per day. And so, what that does is that caps the trips at that number. Now, the interesting thing about this proposed zone change is that it really limits the use that can be there. As staff noted, it is only, really, it's essentially this use and some other residential uses that are allowed in the RM1 zone. And so, it's a fairly narrow list of uses that could be put in there. So, for example, let's say this property owner decided to sell to another person that wanted to come in with another use within the new CO zone, that trip cap would still remain with that property. They would have to come in and justify, if they came in with a new use, why that trip cap was justified in being exceeded.
Are there other questions by councilors? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have, I believe, the Neighborhood Association co-chair, is that correct? Are you Mr. Emerson?
That is correct. I am Mr. Emerson. Thanks for your time, Madam Mayor and councilors.
Yes, thank you.
We, the Highland Neighborhood Association, have been hearing about the Church Street property for a number of years, and as you're probably aware, we had not previously taken an official position. This is customarily the case in instances where we do not have strong opponents or proponents from our residents, and that had been the case here until February. And in the February meeting, we learned from a number of the local, the immediate residents, some very significant and substantive concerns regarding the property. It is unfortunate we did not learn of these until this very, very late date. I was especially concerned to hear from one of the residents that they apparently have been told by someone from the city that they did not have a Neighborhood Association to represent them, which is disturbing. In any case, while it is true that these are management concerns largely that the residents are expressing concern about, upon hearing about the issues, the property owner apparently had expressed surprise and had promised to meet with the immediate residents in order to mitigate some of the problems. This has been nearly four months, and unfortunately, there's been no further communication from him to the immediate residents. This, to me, indicates a lack of good faith in resolving these issues. I'm not certain, you know, given the leverage we have at this point, with an appeal, with a hearing on the table, if this is not enough to motivate him to speak to the immediate residents, I don't know what it would take to get him to do that. Anyway, thanks for your time. I appreciate that.
All right. Are there questions from councilors? Councilor Dickey.
And maybe some of the other people who speak will be able to answer this question. One of the things that Mr. Shipman indicated was that there was a change in management that improved the conditions. Have you heard otherwise?
It had not been indicated to me that there had been a change. I will let some of the immediate residents speak to that. They'd be a better source for that information.
Any other questions by councilors? All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate your service to the Neighborhood Association and your taking time to come down tonight. Thank you very much. Okay. Otherwise, on the sign-up sheet, all of the other people testifying will have three minutes. We'll start with Steve Vargo, followed by Mary Harp. And then, following Mary will be Tina Hamel, or Hummel, I'm not sure. She does not want to testify? Okay, we'll sort that out. Good evening. Mr. Vargo, welcome.
Hello. I would like to offer my congratulations to all the new members of the council. My name's Steve Vargo, and I live at 2655 Church Street, which is right across the street from the proposed site. The only question I, I'm against it. One main reason is, is I've been in the facility where the prior owner was trying to sell it, and YWCA was, came in, and we had a lengthy discussion, and the lady from the Y commented that this facility is too small for us to occupy, even in an emergency situation. So, what the proposed thing is up to 75 people in that facility, that is a little too much. I've been in there, and I don't think they can get 75 people in there. Oh, it's a little too much. I think it's going to be overwhelming, and the parking will be a problem. It's a problem on occasion now with visitors coming in. And if the owner of the building was concerned about the neighborhood, why hasn't he hired a good maintenance company to come in and take care of the grounds? Thank you.
Excuse me. Before you go, are there any questions by any of the councilors for Mr. Vargo? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. Mary Harp, followed by Tina Hummel.
Good evening. Thank you to the city council members, the mayor, and staff for listening to our request. If I've offended anyone, I don't intend to, so please accept my apology ahead of time. I've spent many hours rereading all the enormous amount of paperwork that's been submitted in this zone change request. I'm belittled, I have. I can't figure out how our neighborhood has been subjected to such a mess in the first place, who in fact is a property owner on the record. I've seen Maureen Luger states she's the owner of the record per trustee. John Rieger is the owner through an LLC. The planning commission, they're not even quite sure when I talk to someone from there. Excuse me. Not once has a property owner been cited for code violations. They've been written up many times, but with no consequences. The property owner currently has $19,000 in arrears when it comes to property taxes. In winter of 2012, the city abandoned the code amendment process due to opposition from several neighborhoods. We have resisted. If the commercial room-and-board is not compatible in residential neighborhoods citywide, then why would it be compatible in my neighborhood? Property owner was contacted by the city in 2008. He wrote a statement that said that each tenant was receiving some basic form of outside care, personal nurses, social workers, when in fact, it was false. The city took no enforcement action at that time. There's recurring housing code violations. Why is it a code enforcement officer would tell an onsite manager to keep things running as normal and not to discuss it with anyone at the time they discovered this room-and-board? They've put inspection dates out continuously, still no consequences. What is a special needs self-care facility? That's what city says it is currently now. Land use requests do not consider specific instances of crime. What's a criteria? I'm, I just don't understand. What about code enforcement issues? Why aren't they being taken care of? If I decide to operate a facility that it's not legal in my neighborhood, should I request a zone change? What's the definition of livability? To me, it's safety, everybody getting along, taking pride in your neighborhood. That's not happening. The residents at Church Street Manor, they've had complete disregard for us as their neighbors. We have garbage in our yards. They're throwing things on the side in the alley. When I talked to the manager about it, it was supposed to have been taken care of, now there's still a pile of glass from a broken car window. Sorry.
No, that's fine, but your time is up. I appreciate your testimony. Are there questions from councilors? Councilor Dickey.
Thanks. Thanks for coming down. I just have a couple of questions for you. One, the same question that I asked Steve about, were you aware that there was a change in management? And if so, have you noticed a change in some of the problems?
I am aware of a change in management. However, that manager was not replaced a year ago, as was stated, and there has been some improvement, but there's still several problems. We still have the problems with visitors coming there, parking in front of our houses. Some of, in fact, just last week, one of the residents from there parked in front of my house, was doing drugs, and I was told there was nothing I could do. Yes, go ahead.
And that just leads right into my next question. I was just curious, because you live in the neighborhood, has there been issues with the on-street parking? And especially just in terms of, does it prohibit, like, other residents, you, your neighbors, from being able to park in the neighborhood?
When you park in front of my house, it keeps me from having my friends park in front of my house, and to tell me that they can park there because it's part of city property, and they can do whatever they want to. I, you know, no.
All right. Other questions by councilors? All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony. Tina Hummel, followed by Sarah Lau. Is that, am I saying that right?
Lau.
Lau, thank you. All right. Tina?
I'm Tina, and I've lived in the neighborhood for 28 years, and when the nursing facility closed, it just plummeted. Houses are vacant, vandalism's everywhere. There's a car jacked up with the tires stolen last night in the alley behind the facility. It just continues and gets worse and worse. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Councilors, do you have any questions? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. Following Sarah Lau, we will have Harrison Conley.
Hi, ma'am. My name is Sarah Lau. I'm from 620 Johnson Street. I'm living there almost 19 years, not quite, but 19 years. We have so many problems, and lately, we have problems, the new ones, my granddaughter, she's living with me two years, and two years, we have problems, like, those resident of the Bengali manor, whatever it is, and is calling my granddaughter in the morning and says, shush, 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 you are nice, and all this. Only 13-years-old girl, they're harassing you, and she very scared to walk and go catch the school bus. I'm very afraid these people is doing over and over all these kinds of things, and I don't know how we can stop that. And so many problems. I have BB guns in my window. Yesterday, I was doing gardening, the window is almost half-cracked, and they promised me they're going to fix it, they never fixed it. So, all kinds of problems over there, but the parking, like we had, they have parking, the resident brings a lot of resident people, and they park in front of my house. All of the garbage parked in there, and they're parking and sitting there. We get out and ask them, we says, well, we got kicked out from there, but we waiting for the friends, we don't want to let them know. A couple of time in the night, overnight, they parked over there. They sit over there, they smoke, what else they do. They come and knocks your door, they checking if you're home. Yeah, it's very scary. And this is the thing we want to show you about this, what's going on in here. Mary make this, all this parking and garage and all these things.
Okay. Thank you. Can councilors see those?
Yes, we can pass it around.
Can we pass those around? Do you have councilors?
Just give them to the city recorder.
Oh, okay.
Pass it around. Pass it around, they make it.
No, actually, if you just give them to the city recorder, and then staff can, or councilors can look at them if they want to, go up and look at those. Thank you. All right. Were there any questions for Ms. Lau? All right. Thank you so much. We appreciate your testimony. Appreciate you taking time to come down. Thank you. B. Harrison Conley, followed by, I'm sorry, I can't read the name. Is it Jed? Jared?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Jared, all right. You'll teach me how to say your name when you come up. All right. Mr. Conley?
Good evening. B. Harrison Conley, a neighbor within 250 feet of the manor. You know, I have to assume that somebody is chewing staff pretty good now, because they spent all of the staff report justifying why they haven't enforced code, spent all of the presentations tonight justifying why they haven't enforced code. I'm here to ask you to deny the application, because it doesn't meet the livability, compatibility, it's not logical development. These are the standards, the criteria in Salem Revised Code 64.025E2 and Salem Revised Code 240.005D3. So, I hope you focused on my testimony tonight and before the planning commission, because I am addressing myself to the criteria. Now, I've also addressed myself to some of the things I'm hearing staff say in response, like, let's start with the notion that, and this is quoted from the staff report on page five, "Any problems with ongoing crime in the building are likely the result of poor management. If properly managed, there's no evidence that crime is inherent in room-and-board." There's no evidence for either of these claims in the record either. Poor management, I don't know. Maybe it is, maybe it's not. It looks to me like nuisance impacts of a commercial transient lodging unit resident use in our neighborhood. Though, when we talk about, and let's understand as well, that if we dismiss this as poor management, what we have here is a case where someone has moved into the neighborhood, operated illegally and covertly. Apparently, from the staff report, they've given false information when the regulatory body found out, and that's all good faith. If you look at the chart it was provided, and this is actually in Mary Harp's testimony, so I hope you will find it in Mary Harp's testimony and look at that chart. What it shows is increasing criminal activity, double the number of police calls in two years, double the number of police calls in two years, double the number of calls in one year. In 2013, 76 total police calls to this facility, and in four months of 19 of the next year, already 80. Looks like it's tripling this year. So, that's the result of poor management in the neighborhood. I'd like, you know, I hope you will review my testimony closely and think about this. In terms of equally or better suited, I think that's an equation with equality in the middle. So, you have it can be productively used on this side, productively used in the new zone. The greater impact of the commercialization of our neighborhood shifts the weight of that equality. The current zone is better suited than the commercial zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from councilors? Councilor Clem?
Harrison, good to see you. Your last point, RM1 is better than commercial office. Why?
Yes. Again, because, because apparently, now, the first time we've heard anything about it cannot be used productively in the RM1 zone is orally tonight. That's not in the record. So, it can be used productively in its current zone, and can be used productively in the other zone. That's equal. Where the weight disbalances is the greater impact of the commercial zone in our neighborhood. And if you look at that chart, which is in Mary Harp's testimony, and you all have it, you will see that that's increased. Oh, by the way, I really needed to say, the Supreme Court says zoning is an exercise of the police power, and the police power is the power to regulate for the public health, safety, and welfare. To the staff who keeps saying, we don't consider crime, crime levels risk to the public, I pretty much I say, poppy. To the staff who keeps saying, we don't consider crime, crime levels risk to the public, I pretty much I say poppy.
Are there questions from other councilors? All right, thank you very much, we appreciate your testimony. Now, is it Jared?
Yes ma'am, that's correct.
And how do you say your last name?
Williamson.
Say that again, please?
Williamson.
Williamson. Well, Mr. Williamson, I'm glad that you're here to testify. I appreciate your patience with my stumbling over your name. Please proceed to testify, and you have three minutes. At the end of two minutes, the amber light comes on, and then at the end of three minutes, the red light comes on.
Is it like a little buzzer or something? New York? All right, ladies and gentlemen, thanks for showing up. Everybody's here, we're all good, we've got all the ducks in a row. Outstanding. Okay, I understand that we have a few people at our residency. I'm the new manager, okay? You know what? I drove through downtown to get here. I saw more homeless people out in front of the Union Gospel Mission than I've seen throughout downtown. Fact. Situation at this new place, you saw the police reports. I had two, not only a captain come and ask me, hey, is everything okay? We're not getting any calls anymore. When was the last time you ever heard of a courtesy call from the police, okay? 1960, what? I'm starting hearing in the back row. Real fast, the situation is, there is a few people that were there, that needed medical attention. They needed, you know, mental health attention. They actually needed to be in a in-living situation rather than, you know, free roam. Which sadly say they moved on to other places, and, you know, the police calls have stopped. You know, the fact that we live in a place down, you know, on the other side of the tracks, so to speak, you know, where education's an issue, okay? The weapons that these people around this neighborhood use could be, could be, could be, you know, used like, I don't know, like knowledge, knowledge is power, okay? That's how you get it, right? So I understand that if we're taking all this crazy money, talking about $27 here and there, how about we educate some of these folks when they're down there? So when they get into a place, they understand what's going on, okay? I've been there, okay? I wore the bracelets, but I learned, okay? So kicking these people out, or doing whatever's going on, or, you know, upping it down, I mean, at the end of the day, we all go home somewhere, okay? The fact that they're living downtown, and then they come somewhere else, they make a mistake, you don't kick an alcoholic out for drinking on his first day at the meeting, right? So I'm saying, you know, I understand that there is a crime issue. I understand that, you know, the owner, I've never even met, working there now a year, okay? So, you know, I understand, but with, you know, the budget that I have to work with at the apartment, I literally do nine jobs, okay? Kid with braces, I got a little girl, it's about to, you know, do the whole prom thing and all, you know what? Yeah, so life does go on, you know what I mean? I'm just saying, you know, let's think about this, you know? Peacefully assembling is awesome, but action, I think is the motive for today, right? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Williams? Councilor Clem?
Mr. Williams, if I could ask you. You're an impassioned man who's running the facility at this time, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, what are you doing to make sure that? I know you got a lot of work on your shoulders, but what are you doing to make sure you're a good neighbor to all these folks who are saying that this facility has not been a good neighbor? What are you doing?
The only thing I can do, I'm from the south. From there, we wave, we invite people over, we give people food, you know, we knock and talk, we hang out, you know what I mean? Because, come to understand that, you know, Michio Kaku, a theoretical physicist, and also physicist for New York circa 19, or 2008, that stipulated that, you know, a culture or tribe that practices, you know, enrichment through themselves become that much culturally advanced, and, you know, within in love and care, and, you know, tender and all that, and nurture versus nature than any other would. And that's what's happening here. I see community meals going on. The manager that was there when I was a resident, drugs, there was, you know, all kinds of crazy stuff going on. So for me to deal with that issue, is talk to them. 99% of communication breakdown ends in some Channel 5 situation that I'm not really waiting to, you know, be waiting around for, so an ounce of prevention worth a pound of cure for me.
Are there further questions from councilors? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Williams. Appreciate your testimony. Yvonne Wood, is it, or Ward? Wood, Yvonne Wood, thank you. Followed by Jeremiah Apgar, and then Brad Mosher.
Hi, I'm Yvonne Wood, and I live on 2635 Maple Avenue Northeast. It's directly behind the Church Street Manor. And as far as like the parking, I was thinking about that, and, you know, I personally have had problems trying to go down that street. It's a very narrow road, and in order to come around, it's a, you know, we can't park on one side of our street, so we usually go around down Church Street to come back at Maple in order to park, so we're parking in the right direction. And there have been people parked on the opposite side of the road where there's no parking signs. And I personally have gotten into an altercation with somebody, because I had a big, I have a big truck, and I was trying to get through, and cars parked on the legal side, and then cars parked on the illegal side. There's no room to get through, so, you know, somebody flipped me off, and we had words, and he walked straight into the manor, he just disregarded me. I had to back up and try to go around. I was able to squeeze through it, but barely, I thought I was gonna damage somebody's vehicle. And, you know, it has quieted down, although I have never met the new owner there. You know, I work from home, so a lot of times in the summertime, I keep my window open at night, I work in the evenings. And last year, I heard a lot of fighting, you know, I had to close my window, I had to call 911, just because, you know, it just becomes so excessive. As far as, you know, has it quieted down? Yeah, I think it has quieted down a little bit. But, you know, like I said, we haven't met the new manager, so I don't know what the plan is. If I would have known when we purchased the property that it was going to be a commercial, I would have definitely thought twice about it, you know? I mean, I knew it was a nursing home, we were okay with that part, you know, because we figured it's still residential. But, you know, now that they wanting to change it, you know, I, I can't sell my house. I'm so far in debt on that home, I'm stuck there. So, you know, it, it doesn't make me feel safe, especially, you know, being a female a lot of times alone in the house. I don't feel safe being there sometimes, you know? I worry about all the traffic coming from behind us, so that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your testimony. Are there questions from councilors? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Jeremiah Apgar?
My name's Jeremiah Apgar, thank you, Madam Mayor. I live at Church Street. New management, along with myself, along with the residents, are trying to prove the exterior of the building. You had somebody say that a car was up on Jax that was behind Church Street Manor? It's not. Somebody stole that car last night, they drove down the alley, they parked it next to a house next to Church Street Manor, stole the wheels off of it and left it. The house is directly across the street from Church Manor, which you can ask your city council. That building is a substance house for the Union Gospel Mission. There's been several times that people have parked outside of our building, gone in there and got drugs, got back in their car and left. The house directly behind Church Street Manor has two motor homes, excuse me, two travel trailer homes on it, along with apartment complex building. They are constantly throwing garbage over in our yard, we're constantly picking it up. We're doing the best job we can. I live there because I've had a rough life. I live there because of the support of the people that live there, the community that we have there, supporting each other, giving each other rides. When I see the neighbors, I wave. When I see a neighbor that needs help, I try to help. You guys have a chance now to give an opportunity to those of us that actually want to live there, that want to improve on the community itself. If you guys cancel this and tell us that we can't live there anymore, I don't know what I'm gonna do. I don't know what my friend's gonna do up there in a wheelchair. I'm his caregiver, and it's the best place for the both of us. If you don't zone this place, we're out on the street, and I know that's not your concern. What your concern is, is whether or not you should change the zoning. This place offers us hope. This place offers us a stepping stone to a better life. The ones of us that do live there now are trying to better our lives, trying to give back to the community. And all we ask is your consideration to give us a chance. We've heard several times from the owner that he's wanting to improve the building, but I understand his point, his point. He's not gonna want to dump about $50,000 to prove the property if you're gonna tell him he has to close the building. He wants to improve it. All he's waiting on is for you guys to prove it, so he can go to work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Mr. Apgar? All right, thank you, we appreciate your testimony. And Brad Mosher? Welcome.
Like Jeremiah, I'm a resident over at the facility. Whoops, excuse me.
That better?
Thank you.
I'll lean in. All right, like Mr. Apgar, I'm a resident at the facility. I have been there for the last six months. There has been some situations where police have been called. And I have to admit that, I haven't made any of those calls, and they were done because there were certain situations. Now, some of the people involved with that are no longer living there. So the question is, are we good neighbors? I think actually we're better neighbors than some of the people that think we are. I've heard people describe us as basically looking after, rather chasing after young girls. My only question is, A, why didn't you call the cops? B, get photographic evidence or something that would help identify that person? Because I haven't seen anything like that coming from any of the people that I know in that facility. Most of them are in the rooms, working, trying to find work, or out trying to find work or working. Some of us have very unusual hours, some people work overnight. Only a few of us actually have cars, so actually, when it comes to parking, unless we have other people coming in for a visit, most of the time, there still is fairly decent parking room. I admit that it's a little tight on the small street that Church Street is, but there's still, we're not overflowing the back parking lot, and we're not quite putting overcapacity on the street itself. As to the increase in phone calls causing, saying that there's a lot of crime there, actually, it shows that there's a lot of people wanting to prevent crime or stop something. Because the police is looked at as a way to control a situation that might get into a fight or something else. And for me, in that case, it's more like you're relying on peace officers. As for drug use, I have not seen directly anybody using drugs in regards to stuff like garbage. For one, about one week or so, there was, the garbage wasn't picked up at the dumpsters, but I've seen several times non-residents dumpster diving. And recently, we had one homeless lady going into the dumpster and basically on the structure right next to it, take a bunch of trash out and sort through it. Now, she has some problems, we called the police on that. Unfortunately, that'll be folded into the problem that some of the people see it's another phone call, but it wasn't one that was caused by us. So the question is, is it a facility that needs to be closed? No. Is it a facility that needs to stay open? Yes. And it provides a very good function, it gives people that either are unemployed, looking for work, having problems finding work, or underemployed, to get a chance to get themselves financially stabilized, and hopefully move on. And I know my time's up because of like just-
Yes, your time is up, I appreciate your testimony. Are there questions for Mr. Mosher? Councilor Dickey?
Yes ma'am.
Thank you, and thanks for coming down. Since you've only lived there about six months, were you told when you moved in that there was a possible application on this property, and they might have to close, or they might not get their zoning, or were you told that that was a possibility at all?
Basically, that's not part of the reason that we sign up. We're looking for an inexpensive place to stay, and I'm a responsible adult, I can cook. I'm able to cook my own meals and everything. So I, for me, it was a good opportunity. I'm what, the local newspaper would have probably described as a hole in the wall. I'm one of the people that's in one of those 80-square-foot rooms. Basically because of my financial circumstances now. Not that long ago, I was living in a, over 1,000-square-foot house over in eastern Oregon. But I'm over here now, and I'm still trying to see if I can find a good job.
So you weren't, you weren't made aware that there's a possibility that you, the facility wouldn't be open?
No, because the whole thing is, I, you're not gonna tell tenants, well, we might be closing you, we might be closing the place down in a week or two weeks, because that's in the future. What they're looking at is primarily, okay, we need to get a tenant in that's responsible, and hopefully we'll pay the bills and not cause problems. And if you are involved with tenants at all, sometimes you get a bad tenant in. I can say that for a fact, because in the past, my family had a place that they rented out, and we thought we had made some good decisions on who to rent to, and found out that basically we wanted to kick them out on their keister shortly after we put them in, but we then would have to go through all the legal ramifications. We'd have to go through this, and we'd have to go through that, and we'd have to go through, and it would take, in some cases, several months before we could actually crowbar the personnel of the aisle of our house that we had up for rent at the time. This is in another state, another city, but it's probably not that far different up here in Salem.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Mosher? Thank you very much. Was there anyone else that wanted to testify who wasn't able to get on the sign-up sheet? Yes, may I, there's a gentleman here. Okay, thank you.
Yes, my name is Dennis Hildebrant, and this July, I will have lived there for three years, and I couldn't imagine anywhere else, I don't know where I'd be living, because it's set up because it was previously a nursing home. There's a wheelchair ramp to every door from the outside, and the showers are set up in a way that I can shower. If I wasn't there, I don't know where I would be, because I would probably be in a care facility with the state, having to help pay my way. But the people there, there's some good people, and they help me just as much as little I need to get by, still allows me to be independent, and I ask you to please not take my home away. And to the neighbors I would like to say that spoke here tonight, the next time you see me riding down the street in my chair, please stop me and introduce yourself, I don't even know you, and I'd like to get to know you. We're not all bad people there. Some of us are really, really good people, actually quite a few of us. Another thing is, is the owner here tonight? I would ask him to please, if he's here personally, be in touch with our onsite manager and work with him, because there's quite a few of us that wanted to do improvements ourselves around there, but we have to have your approval first. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions by councilors? All right, Councilor Clem? No, I'm sorry, all right, thank you. Thank you for your testimony, appreciate you being here tonight, thank you. All right, anyone else? Yes? Can you come to the podium? Thanks.
Okay, my name's Robert Bucy. I live in the Church Street Manor, okay? As far as the car goes, it was jacked up, it was an empty. The cops couldn't tell you who stole it, okay? We hardly ever have anything like that happen in the neighborhood. It's a weird thing. And sure, we had some people that weren't desirable people in the place, but they got rid of most of them. It's to our, the whole situation, we try to be good neighbors to our neighbors. And, you know, I know quite a few of the neighbors in the neighborhood. I grew up with them, I grew up in Salem, over 35 years, some of the neighbors. And that's all I've gotta say, is we try to be good people, and we try to get rid of the people out of the place that are bad. But the city takes and does the situations where you have to go through paperwork for maybe two, maybe even three months to get rid of those kind of people. And who knows? Anybody could be the same kind of person in any house on that block. We're trying to be good, and we're trying to get rid of the wrath. But that's all I've gotta say, thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Bucy? All right, thank you very much, appreciate your testimony. All right, is there anyone else that would- All right, is there anyone else that would like to testify? Okay, now we will proceed back to the rebuttal. Do we?
Question, when do we have questions?
You can do it now.
Okay. Sorry, Mr. Shipman. I think we're going to do the questions of staff first and then have time for rebuttal. Apologize. For staff, and... From staff. And then I also have a question for Chief Jerry Moore, if he's still here. He is, in the back row. Oh, right there. Okay, thank you. All right. Yes, please. Counselors, yes? Counselor Clausen, followed by Counselor Clem, then Counselor Benars, and then Counselor Dickey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to try and be brief, and I probably won't ask all my questions so we can get everybody through. Is room, can you help me with room and board? I'm struggling with that. I, you know, I've been looking at plans for some high-density housing in Portland and in Seattle recently, and there's a big trend of common kitchens, you know, single-bedroom flats, or just a straight-up a flat. Is room and board not allowed in RM1, and can we define what that is?
Yeah, room and board is a group-living situation where there are shared, you've got individual rooms, but there are shared, basically, shared dining or shared restroom facilities. And in the RM1 zone today, you can have up to 10 units. Room and board, actually, up to 10 persons, is what it says. So, you can have it, it's just you can't have up to the 30 that, that the applicant's asking for.
Okay, and I think, I think on the, I think the staff report detailed it, and I'm just not recalling it. The CO zone would allow up to 30, or is that a condition that the 30, the 30 number?
Yeah, the CO zone, if it was just done a straight zone change to CO with no conditions, it would actually allow up to 75.
Up to 75, okay.
And that's why the number 75 was mentioned by one of the folks who gave testimony. That's, that's not what we're talking about tonight. The condition that we're, that we're proposing that the planning commission put on there takes it down to the 30. And, and the reason for 30 is that that's the, originally, when this was built as a nursing home, that was the occupancy, the number of residents that were allowed in there.
Does RM2 allow room and board? Peripheral question, but...
RM2, I believe, does allow it, and I'd have to double-check if it's limited to the 10, or if it's something above the 10. I believe it's limited to the 10, just like the RM1.
Then I guess the last question, why not do RM1 and make a condition to go up to 30?
Yeah, so, when, when dealing with zone changes, what you, what you can do is, you can, you can change the zoning, you know, to a different zone where, where use may be allowed. What you couldn't do is leave the zoning in place, but then simply allow, allow a greater or a different, different use. So, you need to go to a CO zone, and then, and then reduce the number down to 30.
So, a condition can limit addition, but it cannot increase?
Yeah, that's, that's right. In these situations, that's how, that's how it works.
Okay, thank you all.
Yes, that is, all right. Counselor Clem, followed by Counselor Benars.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Brian, parking, what should it be? It was waived from 28 to eight stalls. Is it just because there's, the residents don't have cars? Or what's the, what's the city reason for allowing just only eight stalls? And is there more available space on the property to allow for more off-street parking?
I, I don't think there is any available space on the property. I've got a site plan here. Actually, I can show you. It's available in the staff report, so this is just, just what's already in your staff report. But I will just help with the explanation here, maybe. So, this is the site, and you can see there's, you know, you've got frontage on Church Street on the corner, and then there's Locust Street, and then this is the alley. And there's currently a total of eight parking spaces. There's one, one here, and then there's seven here. So, so, you know, there really is no space for additional off-street parking to be developed. Part of the reason staff supports the, the adjustment to the parking is inherent in the use itself as a room-and-board facility, and given that the applicant's description of their proposal, in this case, the, the nature of the, of the occupants, it's been described to us in the submittal, they don't anticipate those occupants needing, you know, the full amount of parking that the code would require in every case for a room-and-board facility. Another piece of it is that you've got about 15, when you look at what's available and how much space is available on, on the street, you've got about 15 on-street parking spaces. And you usually can't look at, you know, you can't count on, on-street parking. But when you're doing an adjustment, that is information that is, could be relevant, because you're customizing to this, this site. And then the final thing is, you know, if, if you don't, in order to reuse this building, you're going to have to reduce the parking one way or the other. And so, the YWCA proposal had a variance to reduce parking, very similar to this one.
And, and the other question I had is nuisance. One of the folks giving testimony indicated that it really is a compelling factor discerning that RM1 doesn't work, or that, making the statement that CO, it's not a justification to go to CO. Nuisance meaning parking, shopping carts, police calls. Is nuisance, given any levity in planning decisions, as being evidence that one zoning works better than another?
Well, the kinds of nuisances that, that, that we were, I was talking about in my presentation are issued instances of specific, you know, crime, calls to the police.
Right.
Things like the, the, things that are outlined in the staff report, the fire sprinklers, the electrical, that are now being addressed by our code compliance matters. Those are very specific items that are addressed by separate departments. So, there is a broad general welfare criterion that, that would apply to land use cases. And in this case, that's not what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is, you know, you can't say that this specific landlord or these specific tenants, the, the issues that they, they have with the police department, or the issues that the landlords working with, with our code enforcement folks, that that would prevent the council from saying, "Big picture, does this, does this work? Does this, is this use, best use for the site?"
All right, Counselor Benars, followed by Counselor Dickey.
Thank you. While you wrap here, I have a question in reference to the 112 trips. What exactly does that mean? I mean, what does a household produce, or what does an apartment complex normally produce on trips? Explain, and give me some idea of how it compares to, so I have an idea of what this means in traffic.
Sure, yeah. Whenever you change the zoning on a property, and you change the comprehensive plan as well, so if you're going from multiple-family residential to commercial office, that's not only changing the, the zoning, that's also changing the comp plan. So, whenever you do that comp plan change, we have to, under state law, do what's called a transportation planning rule analysis. And what we look at is, under that comprehensive plan map designation, multifamily in this case, hypothetically, what, how, how much could you, could you build on that site? And how, how much could you build on the site, and how much traffic could it generate hypothetically? And a multifamily could, if it were implemented by the highest density, such as an RM2 zone, could generate a, the, the number of trips that was 112 on the, on this, on this site. And so, that's the rationale that's given by the traffic engineer. It's a hypothetical based on the, on the comprehensive plan map designation. And then that becomes a limit that's on the development, so that the applicant doesn't have to go out and make improvements. They can send to the traffic net, the street network to mitigate for, you know, additional traffic. All they can say, have to say is, hey, we're not going to allow any more traffic than what would have been allowed under the, on the existing multiple-family designation. And so, that trip cap is placed on the property in lieu of them having to make improvements to the, to the, to the net, the street network or the street traffic infrastructure. You know, in this case, that's a lot of explanation, but in this case, it's, it's a fairly minimal impact however you, why you, you cut it. And you've got a, you've got a, a process that we, the way we enforce that is that we would look at permits as they come in, and we're not going to allow a use, a building permit to be approved that would exceed that trip cap. So, so, we know that a room-and-board facility with 30 residents does not exceed the, the 112 trips that, that would be generated under the traffic engineer's estimate.
So, what I'm, I'm looking at here is, is it, are you saying that there's going to be like five more cars per hour that goes through the neighborhood? Is that what we're saying?
No, no. What, basically, the, the conclusion of the traffic study is that a, a room-and-board facility of 30 residents does not generate any more traffic than, than a, than the property being developed for, say, apartments.
This is a benchmark, and, and there is no enforcement. If they exceed it...
And, and the way, yeah, the way it's enforced is through the building permit. So, if we approve a, a, a room-and-board facility of 30 units or people, we know, we look at our, our, our traffic manual, we know that that should generate less than 112 trips.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to go in a different direction and ask a question of our city attorney. At this point...
I don't know that we want to do that just at this moment. Can you do that?
Yes, you can.
My question just has to do, has to do with the, what are, the criteria of which our decision is being made on. We just went through a work session on this this evening, and I want to make sure, it, it sounds like we cannot make a decision based on the crime reports for the property, but the facts. Is this correct? And if so, what specific facts should I exclude or include?
Dan Atchison, city attorney. There are a myriad of criteria for this multiple-part application, such as the, the public benefit, the impact on the community, part of the conditional use criteria that you talked about last time when we had a conditional use application. Now, as, as Brian stated, you know, a room-and-board facility may or may not be inherently crime-ridden, regardless of how this, this operation is being conducted. But, so you can look at, from past practice, how, what is the impact on the, on the community from that basis? And say, okay, is there, if there's a current operation of the facility causes additional calls to the police, is that, how does that affect your analysis of the criteria? So, as far as public benefit goes, as far as impact on the surrounding neighborhood, if this particular use has a high incidence of crime rate, then it's something that can affect your decision-making. Now, as Brian said, and as I said a moment ago, just because it's a room-and-board doesn't mean it's inherently crime-heavy activity. They can manage it differently. They can, it sounds like, and it sounds like they have to some extent. But it's, you can use that as part of your analysis.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Question?
Counselor Dickey?
Thank you. I have a number of questions. I'm not sure if I'm going to ask them all right now. I guess, though, my, my first question is, just in looking back to, just to try to understand the background here, because there are so many moving parts to this issue. So, in 2008, when the new owners took over from, I, I'm not clear if YMCA bought it, or they were looking at, or YW was looking at purchasing it. But at any rate, in 2008, when it was acquired, and the new owners had indicated in writing that they were a care facility or of some sort because their residents were receiving care, and the city took their word for it, because it was in writing. What, how do we check to make sure that that's happening? How do we make sure, like, if a property were to do that, what sort of enforcement or compliance do we have? Because it sounds like it was just sort of discovered a couple of years later that that wasn't happening there. So, and, and asking that because when, you know, if this were to go through, and there are some certain criteria, I need to know that the city will follow up and that there's, someone's complying. So, can you explain what happened between 2008 and 2010, and who in the city was checking for compliance?
Sure. When we first discovered what was going on through the code officer that went out there, and so, at that time, we, we talked to the owners about what was going on. The owners indicated to us that there was some level of care happening. The, the conversation was basically, what is this use classified as? This is, you know, from the owner's perspective, they're trying to adaptively reuse this building in a productive way. They're not necessarily thinking about classifications of use in the zoning code yet. And so, now, we're starting to talk about that, and so, we're trying to figure out what this was. The owner provided us with a statement that there was some form of care being provided to the residents. And that was when we were discussing if this could fit in as a red type of residential care, similar to the YWCA. The YWCA proposal had just, you know, it'd fallen through, but the zoning had just been changed recently to try and accommodate that. So, why not make use of that, of that zoning that was in place? You know, the owners gave us that information about the, the care. It really didn't sound like your normal care facility, however. And, and the fact that there weren't, that care wasn't being provided by the, by the facility managers, it was being provided by third parties, didn't really fit in. So, we, really, what we did was we started the, the process of the code amendment from, from day one on that. And, and, and so, while, yes, there was that, that statement that was provided, and then later, we, we followed up and we, we realized, hey, there really isn't any, any care. That really was a bit of a distraction in the, in the initials, in the staff report. The, the, really, what was going on was, we were pursuing this code amendment to make room-and-board a permitted use, because we acknowledged at the beginning that room-and-board was really what was happening. That was, that was the closest classification to what was going on there. Room-and-board meaning no care's being provided. You've just got a bunch of folks living in a, in a building with the common facilities. So, so the reason, to get to your other, I guess, question about ongoing enforcement and city practice, you know, the reason in this case why there was no, no one shutting them down on a zoning violation was, like I said in, in the presentation, they were working with us. We were trying to work with them throughout the full six years to make room-and-board a legal, a legal use. And, and we made some, some blunders along the way, pursuing the path of the code amendment, when that ultimately kind of wasted a lot of, a lot of time, and, and we then had to go back to this site-specific course. But all along, the goal was to try and get it to a, a, the room-and-board, 30 residents being a legal use on, on the site. So, while they were doing that, we weren't going to shut them down, because they were taking steps. And we were also inspecting their, their, their facility for the crucial fire life safety issues like sprinklers and electrical from 2010 on. So, at least those things would be taken care of.
Counselor Dickey, go ahead.
So, thank you, Mayor. Just to be a little bit clear about it, because, because there's a lot of things that have happened over the last several years, and a lot of steps in this process. That fire life safety, all of those issues have been cleared out. There's regular inspections. We know that the living conditions are fine. There's nothing, nothing that would be at, you know, concerning right now in the fire life safety. Is, is that what I'm understanding?
We have Brady Rogers, the administrator for our Neighborhood Enhancement Division, who can speak to that.
Good evening, counselors. Madam Mayor, my name's Brady Rogers. I'm the administrator of the Neighborhood Enhancement Division. The property is currently under a corrections notice from the last annual inspection. It's been inspected annually since 2011, to try to keep it in as good a shape as we can. It's just not quite a good fit. Brian said in his initial presentation, it was an institutional occupancy. That may have gone past several of you, but it's an I occupancy. It's a different classification than an R occupancy or residential. So, the use, it's kind of a square peg, round hole thing. We've kept things as good as we can. We did this last inspection in January of this year. The corrections are due by June 19th. They include testing and servicing and repair of this fire suppression system, the HUD system. There's several electric issues based on the, the occupancy. A room for a care facility only needs one or two outlets, just for a few things. But if you're living in it, you need several more. So, there's some electrical overcurrent issues, all things that need to be done with the permit. And it's as safe as we can make it for what it is right now. Madam Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Just one more follow-up. Brady, thank you. So, the things that need to be done with a permit, do we know if the permits have been pulled on those? And they're working to address those issues?
We are working with the owner. I'm, I'm delighted to be here this evening, because the course will be clear. If the, if the zoning is, is upheld, then we'll go about the business of getting a change of use, change of occupancy there, and we can make everything right. of use, change of occupancy there, and we can make everything right. It's, it's just an investment, and it's an exercise in building code, electric code, and things will get right there.
So, there are unsafe living conditions right now that they're not addressing, just waiting, pending this application approval?
I wouldn't necessarily classify them as, as truly unsafe. It's, there's nothing inherently evil with, with the building. There are some doors that maybe aren't wide enough. There's some windows that maybe aren't large enough for current building code in terms of its secondary egress. There's some other things we'd like to see with overcurrent protection and GFCI-type outlets, near water sources, things like that.
Madam Mayor, if I could?
Yes, thank you. Glenn Gross, thank you.
Thank you. I'm Glenn Gross. I'm the Community Development Director. I just wanted to underscore something that just came out of that discussion, and that's that there's basically two, two levels of enforcement going on here. One is the immediate corrections that our, our enhancement folks have put into place. They have a deadline to meet those regardless of the outcome of this hearing tonight. The second level is if this use is approved, then there's a whole series of, of compliance issues that will kick in, that they will need to bring the, the facility up to, to, to code on. But the bottom line is, in talking with our fire folks and our building folks, there is no imminent life safety danger at this moment. If there had been, we would have addressed that regardless of the hearing tonight. But there are two, two levels of enforcement. The, the first one's already happening, and the second will kick in if this is approved.
All right. Counselor, excuse me, Counselor Tesler, followed by Counselor Clausen.
Thank you. My questions center around a document that's included in this packet. It's page ninety-nine of one twenty-nine. It's a memorandum dated January twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen. It's to Brian Colburn from Suzanne Nelson, who apparently probably works for Brady Rogers' Department of Community Development. This memorandum is interesting because it basically recommends, I, I don't feel that, I, I mean, we were told that staff recommends. Well, this memorandum indicates that the staff from the Neighborhood Enhancement Division do not recommend that this use is well-suited for a residential neighborhood. This person quotes numerous problems in this facility, including egress windows that don't open properly or lock, repeated problems with electrical outlets, overloaded brokers, rooms that are consistently overloaded circuits, people using too much electricity in the rooms that require more amperage. That's a perfect setup for a fire. There's been numerous calls there. This memorandum indicates that there are staff that feel that this is not an appropriate zone change. But yet, you have indicated that staff feel that this is, that you recommend we should make this zone change. So, I'm confused where, where you are in this, because this memorandum says no. Can you explain this to me? I'm confused.
Sure. Yeah. So, when Suzanne wrote this, first thing, when Suzanne wrote this memorandum, there was some reference to a second email that was sent. Unfortunately, that's not in the packet. I have it here. I can, I can, it's in the record, it's in, it's in my file. And that clarified that line that you just drew attention to about use. You know, Suzanne is our, our fire, our, our multi-family license, housing license inspector. And so, she's dealing with that level of crucial fire life safety issues that, that Glenn just mentioned and Brady just spoke to. I'll let Brady elaborate on, on what's in the memorandum as far as that. As far as use goes, she's not, she's not a planner, and so, and so, that was really not the, the correct word to use, and that was cleared up in a, in a subsequent email that she did send to, to us.
Counselor Clausen, followed by Counselor Nanki, and then I have some questions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Along the same lines as what Mr. Rogers spoke about, and then what Counselor Tesler asked, on the, I'm just curious about how the multi-family license ties into the, ties into this facility and this zone change and the whole deal. If I understood what Mr. Rogers was saying, if this zone change went forward and it becomes a multi-family use, or a room and board type use, it sounds like the city staff might have more, and I, I hope he'll correct me if I'm wrong, might have more tools to force changes to make this a little bit more of a livable place. It's, is what it's sounding like, and I'm wondering if some of the neighborhood livability issues can then be addressed through the, addressing the multi-family license permit. I know one of the more difficult decisions I made on council was revoking a multi-family license permit, which put people on the street and put basically a property out of business. With what's there, is that multi-family permit in jeopardy of being recommended for dismissal?
Good evening. First, I'd like to make, make the point that Suzanne Nelson's comments in, in the memo are reflective of that change of use, change of occupancy, where when we make the building right for the, the residential occupancy, all of those things will go away. In terms of the license, it's currently licensed, it's currently under inspection, there are, if the planning commission decision is affirmed, we'll go about the business of ensuring that the change of use, change of occupancy goes through, and then all the routine maintenance and life safety issues are kept going on an annual basis from here on. That room and board facility requires an annual license and inspection through our city program. If, on the other hand, the decision is, is turned over, then they will lose their multi-unit licenses. It can't legally be there, and we'll go about the business of vacating the structure.
So, if the, okay, if the decision is reversed, then the multi-family, in effect, goes away? The license goes away?
That would be correct.
That would be the direct effect. And this is probably something for deliberation, but I'm definitely concerned what happens, and actually, Mr. Rogers is probably the right person to maybe shed some insight on this, but what happens to this property if it is vacated? I mean, I'm definitely concerned about a building of that size sitting vacant on a property like that for potentially years. I don't really know what would happen to it.
That would, that would be the ultimate outcome of, of losing the license. It would take thirty days at least. I, I see there, there was a disabled gentleman earlier who had stayed there, who had lived there for more than two years, so he would, he will need a sixty-day notice to vacate. And there's probably some others that might, but if it's overturned, it'll be somewhere between thirty and sixty days before we can vacate the structure. Then, we'll hope it's, there's nothing against having just a vacant structure. There are vacant houses all over town, but if it starts getting broken into, or vandalism, that sort of thing, then we'll, we'll proceed with the derelict building status then.
And then, lastly, with the RM1, what is, would be a permissible use of that building if it stayed at RM1 with the current conditions and restrictions?
Residential care would be one option.
Okay, so it could go back to a nursing home, or?
Nursing home, or, or, or a residential care, similar to the YWCA proposal, but, you know, we'd have to wait for something like that to, to come along, obviously.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I believe Counselor Nanki had a question?
Thank you, Madam. Just concerned with the statement I heard in regards to a second email that isn't in our packet but is included in the record. Do we not have all of the record available to us?
The, the case file is part of the record, which I have here available, and the email that's referenced is simply a clarification. I apologize for the, for, for the unclear way that I explained that. The, the distinction is, is simple to explain. It's that Suzanne Nelson's memo is referring to building code use and occupancy. And when I talk about the recommendation on the zoning application, I'm talking about use in a planning sense of whether this would be a permitted use in the zoning.
And my concern was more of what's in the record and what do I have access to that's...
That's right. The question is, are there other materials that you have in your files that's not available to the city council that would be in the record?
There, there, there are. The, the packet is, is the staff report, and the attachment to the staff report at the beginning of my, my presentation, I say I enter the case record into the file. Dan, if you have something to add to that?
The, the record consists of everything. So, internal emails regarding the application, all that's part of the record, and you do have access to it, it just wasn't included in your packet. Specifically, that email should have been in here because it, you know, amends testimony that is attached to the staff report, so our mistake on that. But often, there's receipts and...
Just so people know, though, I mean, because normally you don't hear that kind of, well, it's part of the record, but it just isn't with the stuff you have.
My question actually is, is for Chief Moore, so maybe if he'd come down. And while he's doing that, I wanted to point out that, thanks Counselor Tesler for pulling out that memorandum. I, too, had pulled out that same memorandum, and what I'm concerned about in this memorandum has nothing to do with wires and windows and doors and, and drawers. It has to do with the statement, which I have to believe is, is true and accurate. And she says the Salem Police Department's responded to over a hundred and forty calls in less than two years. They were limited, they were included but were not limited to noise disturbance, criminal trespass, theft, fugitive, harassment, larceny, methamphetamine, disorderly conduct, criminal mischief, assault, menacing with use of a deadly weapon, and sex abuse. Now, none of these have anything to do with the amount of square footage that everybody has at this facility, has nothing to do with the physical aspect of the property. So, I'm asking the police chief, if you can talk to us about the type of calls that obviously the police department has been responding to, and is this a, kind of a usual level of activity in a facility with, what is it, twenty-eight to thirty people? Or would you describe this as a, as a property of concern?
Jerry Moore, Chief of Police. Mayor, the, the list you gave was pretty comprehensive and is indicative of the types of calls we have gone there. In, in two thousand thirteen, in the first three months of two thousand fourteen, we went to a hundred and eleven calls there. Eighty-seven in two thousand thirteen and twenty-four through the first three months of two thousand fourteen. It is not indicative of a multi-family dwelling-type location, and in fact, it is certainly a public nuisance property with the number of calls that we've received there.
Thank you. And, and is there a certain activity or action that the police department takes after a facility or property like this has reached sort of a certain number of responses of, of calls? This is about three and a half calls per person in that period of time that you were discovered, that you were describing.
I will tell you that some of the calls were called in by neighbors, and some of the calls were by residents, and I don't have the complete breakdown of that. Some of the residents may be calling on other residents as well. But those, depending on the type of call, can still necessitate us looking at it as a public nuisance property, simply because of that. You had another question there?
Well, what does the police department do then when a property seems to, there's kind of a level of calls?
We have taken steps to notify the owner that the, the property is a public nuisance property. We sent a certified letter to the, who we believe is the owner, and I'm sorry, I don't have the name, there are probably others here that do. I believe that he lives in Gladstone or that area. The certified letter was returned unopened. I have been advised by the property manager that the, the property owner is willing to be involved in abating the nuisance issues on the property, but so far, we have not had the opportunity to speak with him directly. Only the, the person on site as the property manager and maybe the management company.
I see. Okay, thank you.
And if I, just to clarify your question, once in touch with the, with the property owner, it would be his responsibility to alleviate the nuisance issues on the property within sixty days, and we would also work with him to come up with some sort of compliance plan.
And you're talking about nuisance issues and compliance plan with regard to police reaction?
Talking about criminal activity that's reported on the property. That, chapter ninety-eight of our code.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Clausen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm harping on the multi-family license, but at what point could we ever pull a multi-family license for repeated criminal activity or things along those lines?
Well, for criminal activity, we could, we could literally shut the property down as a public nuisance, but that would be a council action, and it would take a little bit of, of work. It would, they would have to not comply with the compliance plan. Then the, we could actually fine them so much per day for continued nuisance activity if they didn't abate, abate it, and then it would be, I believe it's a council decision to close the property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I believe we have questions from Counselor Tesler, Counselor Dickey, Counselor Nanki, and then Counselor Rogers.
This is a quick one for you. On average, I seem, this number seems to stick in my mind, but every time the police go out on a call, would you say that it's about five thousand dollars a call?
No.
And could you estimate, average?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure exactly what an hourly wage for a police officer is. It would depend on the call. A one officer call that takes a half hour would, would be much, much, much less than that. I think it would be rare that we would get, ever go on a call that would cost five thousand dollars.
But it's still costing the city money?
Absolutely.
To go out there five point eight three times per month? That's just the police. The fire is less than that, but fire involves even more personnel, I would assume. So, and the, and the second part of this question is, the owner returned your letter, right? He didn't open the letter.
Well, I can't, I can tell you why the letter was returned, whether we had a bad address, or, or what the situation might be. I have been told, third-hand, that the property owner wishes to cooperate, but I have no firsthand knowledge of that.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Dickey?
Thank you. I have a question for Fire Chief Nablock. Thanks for being here. So, I, the, the memo from Suzanne Nelson that everyone is referencing mentions that the fire department had responded to twenty-seven alarm calls in last eleven months, so that would have been last year, with a couple of electrical fires. I'm, I'm just curious to know when, when you guys and gals go out on these calls, do they, it, well, one, I'm not quite sure why they've been called twenty-seven times and there were two fires. Maybe it was a false alarm or something, so maybe you could speak a little bit to that. And then, if there are unsafe, you know, fire conditions, or, you know, electrical things that are real obvious, what do you guys do about that? Do you report that to someone? Do you, do you educate the tenants? I mean, how do you, how do you handle that?
Good evening. Mike Nablock, third chief. I'll, I'll try to take that chapter and verse. There was a lot of questions in there. So, we'll start with, from January of two thousand thirteen to March of this year, we've responded thirty-one total times to this, this address. A large percentage of those are unintentional false alarms, and there's a reason for that. The, the type occupancy that was there for requires that all smoke alarms are interconnected. So, anytime someone burns some toast or lights a cigarette next to a smoke detector, the entire system goes off, and it comes in as a fire alarm to the department. Most occupancies that are residential have just what we call a room detector that goes off just in that room, doesn't alert the fire department, it's, it's an individual room activation. So, that's the reason for the, the alarms. We did have one fire there, which was a dumpster fire, which was outside the structure. We had one natural gas call. We had one false alarm, which is, which was a malicious alarm, and the rest of them were false in another category. So, those were our thirty-one calls there. Whenever we find a problem, or something we think's gonna be a problem moving forward, we always talk with the owner and the occupant to make sure that the condition is safe. It, for example, if we go to a, a fire where someone doesn't have a smoke detector, we'll install a smoke detector before we leave. This occupancy, obviously, the smoke detectors are working just fine because we've been there multiple times. We've had our inspectors out, they work with the building and safety folks to, to check all those things, look at the sprinkler systems. This occupancy actually has more protection level than, than a normal occupancy would, because it was a, it was a care home. So, they require higher... So, they require higher standards.
Mr. Conley?
I think I got all your questions there. Okay. All right.
Counselor Nanki, followed by Counselor Rogers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In regards to property management, we'd heard that there were previous problems, I think, and I think he left, I would have loved to have asked the gentleman who said he's the current manager, he had said in his answer that he was a previous resident. So, I don't know if he has any true manage, property management experience or what have you. We had a location up in northeast that we just had problems with forever. And we actually made it a condition where they actually had to have somebody with actual property management experience. Is that available inside of this decision as a condition?
Well, the council can add conditions. Conditions should be related to the criteria, so we'd have to make findings that related that to the criteria. And one of the, at least, one of the requests that's for the council in this consolidated application, I can't think of any specific provision in code that would limit that sort of a...
Does it sound like he was just running rampant all over the place as well? And it was quite overwhelming.
I would just suggest perhaps Mr. Shipman, in his rebuttal statement, could address that. And if he doesn't, you could ask a question of him of what plans they have to ensure proper management.
Especially since we can't seem to contact the owner. But apparently, he contacted an attorney to be here this evening.
Counselor Nanki, did you have further questions? Oh, all right. Counselor Rogers?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have two questions, and I'm not sure who should answer them. If we're having difficulty with the property owner communication, what assurances do we have that the property improvements will be made? And will he make more improvements to, does he want to make more investment rather than just the minimum requirements that we'll do for the code change? And also, I want to understand Chief Moore's comment about the letter and the nuisance plan. Have we already met that criteria with the numbers that we've had in 2013 and 14 to create a plan with the situation the way it is today?
I'm sorry. Chief Moore had to leave because of an emergency. Mr. Rogers, are you able to answer that question?
Yes, I've worked with the Salem Police Department on some nuisance properties on Chapter 98 before. A Chapter 98 procedure is a criteria to remove their multi-unit license. And there are enough criminal activity, enough criminal activity there historically that I'm certain Chief Moore could proceed with a Chapter 98 now if he had to.
And then, the first question was, how do we ensure compliance that, again, if the use is approved, then the next step would be a series of improvements that are required by code? And we will be inspecting those to make sure that they are in compliance.
Yes, go ahead.
But to clear my question, I think that's the only power that the city would have. And I guess my question is, does the developer-owner want to do more improvements for the property, you know, aesthetics or whatever? Does he have that in his plan or is he just going to do the minimum goodbye?
Oh, I would suggest you address that to his representative.
Counselor Clausen, did you have a question?
Yes, I did. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Along the lines of Chapter 98 and removal of a multifamily license, I'm kind of thinking out loud here, which is a little bit dangerous, but could it be, I'm concerned about not, I'm concerned about creating a blighted property here if we don't take action somehow as council tonight? And the property is vacated because we don't affirm the condition, this, we don't affirm what's on the table tonight? And then it becomes a blighted property, we lose investment and the whole deal. What if there was, and I don't know who this, who on staff this is the question for, but could we, as part of this decision, say we wanted to move forward with the, what the planning commission had already approved and concurrently begin a Chapter 98 proceeding in order to make improvements or force improvements to the management and to the site and to the safety of the structure? And if so, how quickly can that happen or what is the timeframe on that? I'm kind of looking at Mr. Rogers, but I don't know if you're the right person.
As much as I enjoy speaking for Chief Moore and the Salem Police Department, I don't know, it's kind of a gong. Once you ring it, it's hard to unring it. So, the whole Chapter 98 thing is all aimed at behavior of the people that live there. It has nothing to do with the repair of the building or the change of use, change of occupancy. Those are all things we would enforce if they, the license, or the decision is upheld through the licensing program to make sure that the occupancy was changed from an I to an R and alleviate a lot of those problems like were in Suzanne's memo. Did that answer your question?
A little bit. With the zone change that happened in 2006, I believe it was, is this not already an R? It's an RM zone?
That's the zone for the land. Every building has a certain occupancy. I occupancy buildings are institutional. They're things like hospitals and nursing homes, prisons, these sorts of things. They're not things you would ordinarily live in. So, you're changing it from this place that effectively had patients in each room to a place where there's going to be an actual occupant with all their stereos and computers and everything that they're going to want to use in there.
I see. So, in 2006, it wasn't a, what do you call it, when you have the combined change that we're considering?
Yeah, it wasn't a, it wasn't a building permit. Didn't get that far. It was just that they changed the zoning.
Okay.
So, if I could, what Brady's referring to when he talks about I occupancy and R occupancy and so forth, that's building code language that is involved when you change, you change the occupancy. They can't get a change of occupancy here unless they get a zone change first. Then, they could proceed to get a change of occupancy and that would entail meeting the various code requirements to be brought up to full compliance.
Okay. And last question, if you could remind me, when is 120 days up on this?
July 21st. I believe that's correct. July 21st, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry. Fearing over here with counsel, yes. Counselor Nanki, go ahead.
Thank you. Question on the change of occupancy and the reason they can't just change occupancy to residential currently, even though they're zoned RM1, is why?
They can't get a change of occupancy for the use, the room and board use, unless it's an allowed zoning use. It's not allowed zoning use because in the RM zone, you can have room and board, but only up to 10 occupants. They want 30 occupants. That would require...
Right. But they could change their occupancy to residential and have 10 occupants?
Yes.
That is within their capabilities currently.
They could do that. That's not what the proposal is, but they could do that, yeah.
There wasn't something that precluded them from changing occupancy without having to change the zone.
Okay. Are there other questions from counselors? All right. Thank you very much. We'll now move to rebuttal. Would Mr. Shipman please approach the podium? And you'll have five minutes for rebuttal. And then, there will be questions by counselors.
Thank you. To answer Chief Moore's question, the property owner is interested in working with the city to resolve all outstanding issues. We've been working with the planning department for several years to try to get a room and board facility approved for more than 30 residents on the property. We've taken a number of runs at trying to amend the RM zone to allow that. And we tried to amend the UDC. We tried text amendments to the code. I mean, we've diligently been working at this to try to make this square pig fit in this round hole. Dan, if you've got a copy of that letter that Chief Moore tried to send out, I'm happy to take it this evening and get it to the, get it to the property owner tomorrow. We're committed to trying to make this work. And, I mean, we've said that to the planning staff all along. We've communicated that to, if not to Brady directly, at least indirectly through Glenn Gross and Brian Colborne. The changes, the actual changes to the facility from a code standpoint aren't significant to bring it into compliance. I think that it's easy to take a look at the prior bad acts of the residents and, you know, draw negative conclusions and just say that it's always going to be that way. I had no idea that so many residents that live there were going to be here tonight, frankly. And I was, I was pleased with their testimony. It seems to me that both the current neighbors that are there have indicated that there is a slight change in the management there of the property. And the current residents that live there have indicated that there's a change. So, I don't know that it's appropriate to look back on the prior bad acts and use that as, really as a hammer to deny this. Counselor Nanki, you had asked whether or not an appropriate condition of approval would be that any property manager or onsite manager there would have some management experience. And I think that's an appropriate condition of approval. I do. I think that's something that would, you know, that would, whether or not it falls squarely within the criteria or not, I think it's, I think in this case, it's something that is appropriate. And speaking on behalf of the owner, I would say that it's something that we could live with. So, I really don't have anything more to add with respect to the application. I'm happy to answer any questions that, Mayor, that you or the other counselors might have regarding this. So, thank you.
Thank you. It looks like Counselor Tesler has a question and Counselor Clem, Counselor Bednarz, Counselor Rogers.
Well, I'll lead the pack. My question is very simple. Have you physically seen the owner of this property?
Has I, have I physically...
Have you physically seen with your eyes the owner of this property?
No.
You've only talked to this person on the telephone?
Correct.
You have never seen this person in person?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Clem?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Shipman, my question's along the same lines. Who are the owners?
The owner group is a single-member LLC. John Regir is the principal member of that owner group.
Not a member and not a resident of local area?
No. He's a, I believe is a resident or has his offices in Gladstone. So, but he, it's not a, it's not a secret or a...
What assurances can you, representing the property owner, give to the council and the neighborhoods that we're going to continue to see the trend of improvements and meet all the building code requirements that would now change and be resultant from, if this were approved?
Yeah, I think you've got a couple of hammers. You know, I was not aware of the nuisance label that had been put on the property until Chief Moore spoke. So, and I wasn't aware of the letter that apparently had gone out. So, it seems to me that you have that process under, I don't know if it's under ORS 98 or if it's under SRC. SRC 98. So, it seems to me that you've got a police and nuisance enforcement mechanism that once that started, I think, has a lot of teeth. And I, you know, could you put that as a condition of approval, that the applicant would be required to undergo through that process and complete it successfully within a reasonable period of time? I think that's appropriate. The other area that you have, that you have teeth in is with respect to the community enforcement, which is Brady's division. And I think he's already outlined for you pretty well with respect to what they've been doing and what they expect the applicant owner to be undertaking here in the, you know, by June, or by the middle part of June. And so, I think that you do have some significant teeth there. I think you could also put in as a part of the application, I think you could put in some requirements with respect to maintenance and landscaping. I think that you could put in some provisions there, Counselor Clem. I'd be happy to work with staff as far as coming up with conditions of approval that would have appropriate teeth that would tie in with the approval criteria. So, that's something that I've committed to do with Glenn and with Brian in order to, if that's something that you want to be able to take a look at, at a later meeting, I'm happy to work with staff to be able to put something together to bring back to you.
Counselor Bednarz, followed by Counselor Rogers.
I presume up to this point that there's a list of repairs that need to be done. At least, I've seen egress issue and locks and fire suppression and so forth. And I presume there's been a budget that's been put together to reflect those repairs that are needed, at least to bring it up to the minimum standards. Is this true?
I don't know that, Counselor Bednarz. I don't know the full list of what needs to be done, and I don't know if the owner's put together a budget.
You've answered part of my question right there, which is, I see a lack of ownership responsibility here. I think it's the same thing that we've talked about within the management of this property. Yes, they've got people who are working there, but we need people who are certified at least or something to that length. My concern is, overall, with the amount of money that, revenue that the property produces, would it cover those necessary repairs, basically? And it sounds like you wouldn't be able to answer that question either, since you don't know the list of repairs.
Yeah, I don't know what the cost of the repairs would be and I...
So, I'm just expressing my concern, therefore, that there would, there is not going to be enough. I don't know this for a fact, but there won't be enough income to reduce to, to bring it up to repair to the level that we expect it needs to be in order to continue it as a multifamily.
I think that's a valid concern.
Thank you. Oh, and my other part was increased number of bicycle stalls as well. If we can't get the parking stalls off-street, we've got to do something.
I'm glad you brought that up again. If you look at the, that site plan there, at the very top, there's an 18-foot paved driveway there. And at the various times I've been out there, I don't know how often it's used as a driveway. If there's a way that we could be able to get that designated for parallel parking along, there's a landscape area that's just about five feet inside of that fence. There's roughly 23 feet there, 18 feet of, between the building and the edge of the, where the landscaping starts. If we were able to put in some parallel parking there pursuant to staff, you'd probably be able to get five or six additional spaces there. That'd bring you up to 13 or 14 spaces total onsite. So, that's better. I have seen cars parked just off of Church Street in the front part of that driveway on the, what would be kind of the northwest corner there. So, I'm assuming that the residents probably use that as a, as, you know, infrequent parking. And the time I was there, there was no one parked in the back parking area where it's designated as such, but there was somebody parked in that driveway.
I certainly hope to let Mr. Regir know that it would have been a lot better if he had shown his face at this meeting and subsequent meetings and neighborhood associations where, in this community, it's really expected that the owners, not just representatives, come in and say, "I really do care about my facility and what it does to the neighborhood."
I can pass that on to Mr. Regir. Thank you.
Counselor Rogers? I think my question's been answered, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you. My question is a comment and a question to Mr. Shipman. And I'm looking back at the record and I see that on February 11, the planning commission actually opened the public hearing. And on March 24, we actually had, I think, a very spirited discussion that evening when testimony came from neighbors who were concerned about the property. And on March, I see, wait a moment, let me get my paper out here. We did receive a, an email, or the city staff received an email on February 11 from Jeff Lugar and from Maureen Lugar, who identified themselves as owners of record per a trustee. And yet, here we are tonight, and again, they have not cared to appear. And... and not even cared to really make themselves well enough known to staff so that we might have been able to be in communication with them regarding that certified letter that simply came back undelivered. I too share a concern, not only for their lack of attendance here tonight, but for the apparent mystery over who actually owns this property. I'm concerned that we're trying to take action against a property without even fully understanding who owns the property, who's responsible for its property.
Sure.
Okay, maybe you can talk to us a little bit about the owners of record per a trustee. As you mentioned, there's a conglomerate of owners?
No, there's not. There's a single-member LLC that is managing, controlled by John Rigir. He is the owner. Is it the Lugars? They're a trustee holder on the property. That's no different than Pioneer Trust Bank essentially recording a trustee on my property. And they are, they're a secured lender to Mr. Rigir. So that's their position in this. So are they really an owner? No, they're not. They have a security interest in the property based on probably a promissory note with the LLC. But again, our office was not involved in the purchase, the acquisition of the property, setting up the LLCs whatsoever. We were contacted after the code enforcement process got going in order to try to untangle this ball of yarn, so to speak. And so here we are tonight with a request that's pretty straightforward. And I think it's the, it's, you know, it's not perfect, but it's, frankly, I think we've been through every possible conceivable option. And at every point in the process, either other neighborhood associations, not necessarily Highland, but other neighborhood associations, didn't like the approaches that we were taking with respect to the code. I think there were other leaders in the city that were concerned about other approaches that we were taking. And this ultimately led us to the application that you have before you tonight.
Thank you. All right. Any further questions for Mr. Shipman? Yes?
One clarification. Are you requesting an opportunity to make a final written argument?
I can.
Are you?
Am I requesting that? You know what? I'd be fine with the hearing being closed and the record being kept open for, for, like, if we did a seven, seven and seven.
Is that a request?
That is my request. And to that degree, I'm happy to extend the 120-day review period as well, although I don't think it's applicable. But I'm happy to extend what little bit is there.
Just a moment here. Okay, thank you very much. Just got a few points of order there.
Thank you.
All right, are there any further questions for Mr. Shipman? All right, hearing no further questions. We will close the hearing. And I ask if there's a motion from the Counselor Dickey?
Before you make a motion, the applicant did make a request to keep the record open. So you're not going to deliberate tonight. But if you would, I would like to propose the following motion if the council president would be happy to make it.
Counselor Dickey?
Either way. So the motion would be, under the procedure rules that we talked about earlier tonight, there is a seven-day period for all parties to submit new evidence. There'll then be a seven-day period for all parties to submit testimony, but no new evidence in rebuttal. And then the applicant will have a seven-day period to submit final written argument. And I can give you the dates on that. The open record period will run through Tuesday, June 3. The rebuttal period will run through Tuesday, June 10. And the applicant's final written argument will run from June 10 through June 17. Those are all at 5:00 PM.
Can I ask another clarifying question?
Yes, certainly.
So then, when would we see that back here to make that decision?
The next council meeting would be June 23.
That's right. That's correct. And the next one is July 14, I believe.
So the 120-day period actually isn't applicable here since there's a comp plan change. So you don't need to worry about that. But in an effort to get the decision moving as quickly as possible, you could hold the meeting on June 14, or July 14 would be the soonest, if you wanted to be here for that.
All right, Counselor Dickey, do you have a motion?
I will try to get this right.
All right, that's fine.
So I move that we hold the record open for the review of the Planning Commission's decision for the consolidated comprehensive plan change, neighborhood plan change, zone change, conditional use zoning adjustment, site plan review case number 14-02. And that would be, hold the record, hold the written, I've got this wrong, hold the written record open until June 3.
For new evidence?
For new evidence. Hold the record open for rebuttal until June 10. And then, hold...
Hold the record open for final written argument?
Final written argument until June 17. And then it...
And then you would continue, or the, would come before the council on July 14 for deliberations?
So to come back to the council on July 14 for deliberations.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Dickey and seconded by Counselor Clem. Is there discussion? Counselor Dickey?
Really briefly, one of the reasons why I was concerned about the date was because Counselor Bennett and I both share this ward. And so even though it's in my ward, but we share the neighborhood, I should say. And so I know that we have had some conversations with the neighbors and they said, you know, "We'd love it if you had made this decision on a night that we were both here." And I know with vacation schedules and such, that would be great to be able to hold it out a little later till we could be here. And hopefully, we'll have a full council here that night because this is such a different kind of land use issue than we've seen in quite a while.
Were there other comments from councilors? Counselor Nanki?
Yeah, just curious. The final written statement was due on 17th of June, but we may not see it at a council meeting until July 14, which is a significant... Would we be able to actually see that to digest anything else that had been taking place prior to, like, a future report on an active public hearing? Or how would that work?
What we could do is, once all the record has been compiled, we can get a copy of that out to you.
And available to the public as well, even though they wouldn't be able to do anything at that point in time, which...
That's the trouble with...
We can't actually be...
That's the trouble with holding this proceeding open for a month after the record closes.
Because technically, the record really closes much sooner than that. And then if you make all the information public, people try to email you and tell you things about it. Okay.
Counselor Clem, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did, Madam Mayor. Is it appropriate to ask, I'm trying to remember what Chief of Police said in terms of his due date or resolution date. It seemed like there was a date in June where there were code and/or nuisance violations that were going to be resolved by Brady. Was it community enhancement?
Yes, Brady Rogers, Neighborhood Enhancement Division. We have an enforcement order on the property with the corrections due on June 19.
Okay, so that information would be available to us, whether it's applicable or not. But bottom line is, is that would allow it to run its course in terms of neighborhood enhancement requirements.
Actually, the record's going to be closed, so that evidence, if it comes in, will have to reopen the record to put it in.
Okay, well, maybe we'll do that.
All right, were there other comments or questions by councilors? Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The applicant asked for seven days, but if I recall the front end, we're not limited to that seven days. We could make that whatever on seven, seven, seven. We could make it 10, 16, 14.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Counselor Bednarz?
If you're going to do that, you need to do it now.
Correct.
I struggle with the direction that we're headed because I know that if the, and this is not a... I just struggle with the direction that we're headed. If we close the place, we lose homes for quite a few people. If we keep the place open, it's a public nuisance. I certainly hope that during the intermediate time, the one-month period that we have, that some action shows positive enforcement of everything that we've said tonight by the owner of that property will have a direct reflect to see what he does regardless. I know that he doesn't want to put money into a property that's going to close, but if he doesn't do something, it's going to close, you know? So I hope something happens within the next month.
All right. We have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, why don't we take a quick break? Let people adjust a bit and we'll try to get right back. All right, we'll resume this evening's meeting of the Salem City Council. We're still in the process of public hearings. And at this point on the agenda, we're at 4:00 B. Would the recorder please introduce this public hearing?
The City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive public testimony on the proposed assessment on commercial properties within the Salem Downtown Economic Improvement District and consideration of adoption of Resolution Number 2014-34.
Thank you. Would we have a staff report?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Clem?
I'm sorry to interrupt. I had the chance to discuss it with City Attorney, but not with you. Is this the appropriate time?
Yes.
Yes. I wish to declare a conflict of interest as my employer is one of the remonstrating downtown property owners and recuse myself from all parts of deliberation on this matter.
All right, thank you very much. Counselor Bednarz?
I too have a relative who has a piece of property in downtown Salem. So I'll recuse myself from the decisions on this matter.
Thank you. All right, now we have a staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Peterson and members of council. My name is Jimmy Thompson. I'm the Management Analyst for the Administrative Services Department. Tonight's public hearing was set to give owners of property within the Salem Downtown Economic Improvement District, also known as the EID, a chance to testify in support of or in opposition to the proposed assessment on the properties within the EID. If you will permit me, I will briefly explain some of the events and procedures leading up to tonight's public hearing. In March of this year, the council extended the EID period to June 30, 2017, which allowed for an assessment to be proposed on properties within the EID. Activities authorized to be funded within the EID include such things as planning improvements, business recruitment and development, marketing, decorations and flowers, cleaning public spaces, providing security, and other activities that specifically benefit the EID. Salem Revised Code identifies the procedure to be followed in assessing the properties. Those steps include mailing notices of the proposed assessment of all commercial property owners within the EID, informing the property owners of the time and place of a public hearing at which they can testify before City Council, that the public hearing be held no sooner than 30 days from the mailing of the notice, and that the City Council adopts a resolution enacting the assessment. In following these steps, staff mail notices of the proposed assessment and the public hearing to the owners of 179 properties within the EID on April 22, 35 days ago. An example of the notice and copy of the list of property owners with the proposed assessments is included in the agenda packet. Salem Revised Code specifies that if written objections are received from property owners that represent more than 33% of the proposed assessment prior to the end of the public hearing, the assessment fails and council does not have the authority to approve the assessment. As of 5:00 PM today, staff has received and verified objections from 79 property owners representing 35.86% of the proposed assessment. Therefore, staff has received sufficient objections to defeat the assessment and the assessment fails. At this time, council should continue to hold the public hearing and take testimony. However, no action may be taken by council to approve the assessment. There are forms available on the ledges near both of the entrances for those wishing to provide a written remonstrance. If you fill one out, please bring it to me in the back. I'll be seated here with a laptop and I can make sure that it gets recorded. After hearing testimony this evening, staff will be available to respond to any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. And we have people signed up for public testimony. All right. We have two people that have signed up. If there are others in the council chambers that wish to testify, please make that known and we'll add you to the list. We'll start first with Roger Yost.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, members of the staff. I'm Roger Yost, 189 Liberty Street, Northeast Salem. I own, my company owns the Reed Opera House and four other downtown buildings, a couple of parking lots. And I served on a steering committee for five years prior to the formation of this EID, which was chaired by Counselor Bednarz. And was primarily concluded with the recommendations by the Leland Consulting Organization, which recommended that we create an EID in the downtown organization to coordinate consumer marketing, beautification of the end events to attract more shoppers, provide a unified political voice, which is my main reason now for objecting it. I don't object to the EID. I object to losing that political voice. We were also to eventually reform and help reform parking policies and management and to demonstrate implement paid parking to eliminate the parking tax, restore repaired garages, and possibly fund the downtown organization instead of the EID. We hired a full-time, we did all that. We hired a full-time executive director, named an organization, Go Downtown. The executive director was Susie Dignell, a very qualified person who had been a store manager in Salem and had considerable bargaining experience. We developed a monthly section in the State Journal, which enhanced the downtown shopping experience and promoted restaurants and so forth and the events of first Wednesday, which in the last year have somewhat deteriorated. We met very early with the city manager, the finance director, the mayor, and kept the council informed on activities. The recession delayed any attempt to bring about the parking. Although I think had the City Council had a Go Downtown available to partner with, the paid parking effort that was discontinued would probably have gone through. Anyway, I led the board in 2010 and it was well on the way to achieving the other goals, coordinating with consumer marketing, beautification, and so forth. Since that time, the assignment was given to another organization other than Go Downtown, which was also suspended about a year ago, or thereabouts, without much of an explanation. So I don't know why. In the meantime, the city doubled its minimum parking tax, which has cost me eight tenants in one building and two or three in another. And I think that, again, had that Go Downtown organization been consulted or been around when the decision was made about raising more money for the parking fund, it would have been somewhat modified. So anyway...
I'm sorry, Mr. Yost, your time is up. Can you wrap up?
That's it. Thank you very much for listening to me.
All right, thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Yost? All right, thank you very much. Brian Hines?
Well, thank you, Mayor and councilors. I'm not a property owner, but I'm a frequent visitor to downtown. And most of you probably perhaps saw the blog post that I emailed to you this morning, which came after I talked to someone who was intimately involved with the Salem Downtown Partnership and the changeover, really the takeover of the EID. and the changeover, really the takeover of the EID by the city manager and the advisory board that includes a grand total of two people who own property in downtown. So today we come here to celebrate the demise of the EID because the remonstrance has succeeded, which is a vote of no confidence in the mayor, the city manager, and you guys really, because there's been very little oversight. I have sat here interested in the hour and a half I just spent learning about the thirty-person facility. And I wonder if you spent a tenth of that time talking about the EID, about how the poorly managed takeover with Salem Downtown Partnership. And again, the people listening on CCTV and you can read the blog post where I tell this tale as told to me by, and you can guess, it's either a staff person of Salem Downtown Partnership or a board member. You can go to heinsblog.com and read that story and hopefully the Stateman Journal will tell the story of how this has been an object failure. And this expert's opinion, who's an expert in downtown, that says Salem has one of the worst managed downtown organizations. I mean, it was maybe there were problems before with Go Downtown, which had a lot of problems. Salem Downtown Partnership was struggling in some regards because they were new. But now we have a much worse situation where First Wednesday is nothing. I mean, I see no improvements. This person, I just got an additional email from him, this person, where he said the $100,000 of the $220,000 in the ID funds has gone to the city of Salem in saptime because they're managing it themselves rather than having volunteers. A, as Mr. Yost said, was supposed to be a downtown organization to represent downtown, to let them be an independent autonomous voice for downtown, to speak for downtown on parking policies. And now, how can you have an autonomous organization when it's run by the city manager, who is essentially deciding on flower baskets and First Wednesday? And I just want to emphasize to everybody here in this room and everybody listening and the councilors that the vote today doing away with the EID is not a vote against flower baskets and First Wednesday. It's a vote against essentially an authoritarian takeover of what was an independent democratic downtown organization by the city manager and you guys. And you just let it happen. And I'm a little giddy because I've got low blood sugar and I've sat here listening to something I don't care about for two hours. But you need to wake up and the City Council needs to exercise oversight over what's happening in downtown because it's important and it's faltering. And hopefully there will be a resurrection of some sort and a new organization will spring up. But I hope you all will learn from this lesson because this is a vote of no confidence in what has been going on for the past two years. So, thank you very much. I'll go and enjoy the rest of my evening and I hope I don't sound too angry, but really I am because I love downtown and I keep visualizing that it can be so much better than it is.
Are there questions for Mr. Hines from any of the councilors? All right. Thank you very much. Was there anyone else who wishes to testify? Yes, Mr. Brandau?
Yes, my name is Garth Brandau and I'm with CB2 Architects located at 500 Liberty next door. I'm really talking a little bit, I was a member of the steering committee and I really, you know, I've been involved with Salem and Salem Development for a number of years. There's a tremendous passion that we have for the community and myself personally. I own the Water Place Building next door. I have made extensive investment in the community because I have confidence in the community and I still have the confidence in the community today. But I really am here tonight to just, first of all, thank Linda Norris, the city manager, for taking the time and the effort to have many, many meetings and try to form an organization, a group that can try to find consensus for the downtown. And we all love the downtown. We should embrace the downtown. It's the image and soul of our community and we need to make a difference. It needs to promote. What we're trying to do is to create a consistent look and feel downtown. Obviously, you want new investment downtown. You want it to have the identity of a progressive community that cares. And Linda and the organization, the steering committee took it upon itself. The first two efforts in this EID, for whatever reasons, there might have been some great positives, but there were some problems and that's why they didn't work. And so, to this point, an effort was made to try to make a difference, to do basic things, not try to change the world, but do something as simple as trying to create a clean downtown. I think we can all agree that that should happen. And if it was for years and years, a burden on every owner downtown to try to create that clean sidewalk in front. And so now we're at the point where cleanliness, the block captain principle, about having somebody from all the different areas to try to come in and have a voice in what's said instead of a few select folks, that makes a lot of sense. So there were some good things that were starting to happen there. We all want the investment to occur. We want business to be successful. Where it moves forward today is, will be an interesting question. But I think really what my message is, I think we can all embrace the fact that we want the downtown to work, that the investment should happen, and I really sincerely want to thank the city and specifically Linda for coming forward and trying to do the right thing. That message hasn't been, it hasn't been out there. It hasn't been out there in the media. It hasn't been out there with any individuals who have a coarse attitude of being negative and tearing the downtown down. The reality is, it was a positive message. Let's move forward. Let's make a difference. Let's try to build on that.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
I'm sorry. But thank you.
Thank you. Counselors, are there questions? Counselor Tesler has a question for you, Mr. Brandau.
I do have a question for you, Garth Brandau. I'm sorry, did you have something else that you wanted to say? Question mark?
No, I think I was to the end of my statements, but thank you.
And I just wanted to tell you that, you know, I'm going to fly out of here pretty soon, but you made a choice to stay here and I really admire that. And you didn't have to stay here and I really admire that. And what you've said tonight and on other occasions is pretty good. Thank you. Thank you, Garth Brandau.
Yes. Are there others who would like to testify? Mr. Gaylor?
Hi. My name is Paul Gaylor. I reside at 471 High Street Southeast. I own four parcels of commercial property in the EID. And while it's apparently a moot question at this time, I did want to go on record as supporting the EID. I think it's a terrible loss that we've now had three successive failures of ways of trying to run an EID in downtown Salem. I commend Linda for her efforts, the work to try and communicate or to coordinate and work with the steering committee you had to get input. It just, it just really is devastating to me that it hasn't worked. That's it.
Are there questions from staff? Excuse me, from the councilors? Counselor Tesler.
You know, Paul, in your opinion, with your, you know, you've been around a long time and you're an out-of-the-box thinker kind of guy. I mean, in your opinion, what would make an EID work?
In Salem?
Well, yeah, since it's not Portland or Tuskegee.
I don't know. I mean, both of the prior two organizations that tried to do it, I think they both suffered from the negativity from outside and it seems like a good number of the people that were, you know, that traditions just continued. The differences seem, in comparison to the whole of the good that can be done, the differences seem very small. And yet, those small differences have been enough to shoot it down. And it's sort of where it seems like the minority is, and that's the way EIDs are set up. One-third of the people, if they disagree, it's gone and we haven't been able to meet that threshold.
Counselor, I think Counselor Tesler has.
Just to be clear too, the second organization didn't get that far. They had other issues apparently, but.
And so, what should we do now? Should we just, what should we do? Should we just walk away? What should we do?
I don't know what the options are that are available. I think that, you know, some sort of compulsory collection process from business owners or property owners is probably essential to fund the kinds of activities that are needed. One of the problems, I think, is that the assessment was so low that it really didn't allow addressing all of the issues. And that made, those shortages made it possible to, maybe easier to shoot it down. Not speaking about any of the testimony, which there wasn't a lot of that came in tonight, but I've heard people object to it because it didn't do enough marketing. Other people object to it because it did too much marketing. We're somewhere in the middle, but we still can't get a consensus. So, it could be one of those periods where you just have to let it go for a while and maybe when maybe people come back and find a way to make it work later. But right now, it's kind of black for me.
Are there further questions for Mr. Gaylor? All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time tonight and your testimony. All right. Is there anyone further in the council chambers who wish to address the council? Yes. Would you like to approach the podium and tell us your name and your address, please, or your ward?
I'm not sure what ward I'm in, but I'm, my name is Rebecca Maitland and I've worked for Roger Yost for ten years. I can tell you as somebody who's not a property owner, who just kind of works the street and puts events together, that for the last two years, it's been all 100% guerrilla marketing. There has been no support. We've lost numerous tenants. Keep renting and re-renting and re-renting. It's not fair. It actually feels like flat-out thievery by the city. I'm not kidding. I feel like the property owners are getting ripped off. I feel like the merchants are getting ripped off. I'm tired. I'm cranky. It takes a lot to get me cranky. And I am telling you that I know that people want to leave town. They want to give up. I can tell you that I've walked on streets being harassed by people who were trying to grab my purse and took personal responsibility and took over streets with photographers, with artists, with poets, everything that is in resource, which we have in abundance of. We have everything that every big city has to offer. We have all of the art. We have all of the architecture. We are a desirable international potential destination. I've hosted people from all around the world who says, what's not to love? I'll tell you what's not to love is dirty politics. It's bad. It's bad and it's taking advantage of people who have given everything, who have given their families, who have given their time, who have investment. I'm telling you, you're going to lose all the property owners in a mass sale. They're going to split Salem if this doesn't turn around. So whatever the answer is, my personal suggestion is there should be an independent event coordinator that has nothing to do with politics. Art, music, and theater and tourism should stay out of the political realm. And that's all I got to say.
Are there any questions for Ms. Maitland? All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers who wished to testify?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. My name is Ross Swartzend-Druber and I'm president of Salem Creative Network. We do a lot of programming downtown and I'd really like to express our group's kind of remorse that this has failed. But you can always, you know, look at the bright side, that we can build a coalition to go back and go through the process again. I think if you look at places like McMinnville, they put their EID in a year after it was done in 1886. That town didn't turn around until 2000. So they were in the EID process for 14 years before there was enough confidence, trust, and mutual respect built by all the parties who were involved. And I think you would agree that Third Street in McMinnville is a destination and that is something a part of that we can help model. And our organization has done quite a bit and we are continuing to do things. Every First Wednesday, I think, you know, we've branded that for 14 years now. It's going to be really sad if nobody is participating or at least loosely at a grassroots level organizing that. And so, we're doing that with Wounded Heritage Center. I'd invite you to join us on June 4th. We're doing another tour. We've been doing those every month for about a year now. It's a walking tour of your beautiful walkable city downtown and our theme this month is German heritage and architecture that was built by German immigrants in downtown Salem. And we're doing it in English and in German and it'd be great to have you guys come down and see, you know, what the international city of Salem is offering everyone. Let's build this. You know, we have nothing but time and we're losing money and everybody knows it. So let's get together and build it. And it's going to take a little bit more savvy and entrepreneurship to make that happen. But, you know, what else do we have to do? Thanks.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Swartzend-Druber? All right. Appreciate your testimony. Anyone else that wishes to testify? Please go to the podium and introduce yourself.
I'm Carol Smith and I live in Ward One and I'm a property owner downtown. The last time that a renewal came up, I voted for it. I allowed it to be renewed. I didn't campaign against it because we were promised that an independent organization would manage our funds. That happened for one year and then the city came in and stole our money. Yet if you want to understand why this EID went down tonight, it's because of your actions. You're the ones that approved, that changed the ordinance, that allowed the city manager to come in and steal our money. Now we have no say over this money. I want to make it very clear that this failure tonight is on your heads, not ours.
Are there any questions for Ms. Smith? All right. Thank you very much. I'm going to take a moment and use this time to correct an error that just was said in this room and went out across CCTV because I cannot sit here and allow our city manager to be called a thief. I work closely with Linda Norris every day. I work closely with the City Council and with the staff. And I know that every action that was taken at the dissolution of the last EID operator was done correctly and legally within every single letter of the law. And I just want to put the record straight that there is no circumstance under which our city manager has done anything that was illegal or improper. Thank you very much. All right. Do we have a motion? Counselor Nanki?
After the public hearing is closed.
Oh, the public hearing is closed.
Excellent. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move to direct staff to repair a resolution stating that the city is not imposing the EID assessment because the city has received valid written remonstrances from downtown property owners representing more than 33 percent of the total EID assessment.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor Clausen. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Counselor Tesler, did you have a comment?
I did.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Can we back up? All right. Would you please? I will allow that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I was in Portland a couple of weeks ago and I was pretty shocked at how dirty Portland was. There was trash everywhere. There were cigarette butts everywhere. There were non-maintained strips of vegetation. There were several places where you couldn't walk on the sidewalk because people would just crowd you off the sidewalk. It did not make me feel like I wanted to hang out there. I have never felt that way in Portland before. And I'm sorry, city of Portland, but I got my stuff and I left. I didn't feel safe. Um, I didn't feel safe walking around Portland, Oregon. Um, I came back, I mean, actually, we were in the car wanting to get back to Salem so that we could go downtown and get something to eat because we didn't even want to stay there to get something to eat. That's how unpleasant downtown was. It was dirty. And I don't want that to happen here. I don't want that to happen here. I, I don't want to take people downtown and see that downtown because downtown is pleasant and downtown has improved greatly since I moved here. I mean, over 10 years, I feel that downtown has improved greatly. You can eat somewhere after midnight. Um, it's, I really, I, I fear what's going to happen next. I don't want to be gloom and doom, but, um, I really would not like to see Salem, um, turn into what I saw in Portland, which was not maintained, you know? Um, so I, I hope this all works out, I guess. Kind of be care, I don't know, I just keep thinking of that adage, be careful of what you wish for because it might come true. And I don't want this to come true, though.
Thank you. I appreciate those comments and I'm sure others here tonight do as well. All right.
Madam Mayor, I would move a 30-minute extension.
It's been moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor Clausen for a 30-minute extension. Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We have two more public hearings and I would ask the recorder to please introduce item C.
The city council will not hold a public hearing to receive testimony on the proposed use of state revenue sharing funds by the city, including as an offset against property taxes levied by the city for fiscal year 2014-15.
Thank you. Is there a staff report?
There is. Thank you, Mayor Peterson. To receive state revenue sharing funds, the city is required to hold two public hearings. The first public hearing to discuss the possible uses of state revenue sharing funds was held by the Budget Committee on April 9th, 2014. This evening's public hearing, which covers the proposed uses of state revenue sharing funds, was noticed in the State's Journal on May 19th, 2014. The proposed use of state revenue sharing funds as recommended by the Budget Committee is an offset to the cost of providing police patrol services. The fiscal year 2014-15 recommended budget includes $1,536,770 of state revenue sharing funds. City Council approval of the proposed use of these funds is signified by adoption of Resolution 2014-36. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion? Do, do we have anyone signed up for hearing? We don't. Is there anyone in the chambers who wishes to testify? All right. I will close the hearing. Counselor Nanki, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would, uh, move that, uh, the city council approve Resolution Number 2014-36, electing to receive a state or a share of certain revenues from the State of Oregon General Fund, uh, otherwise potentially known as staff recommendation.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor Dickey. Is there discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Our next item is item D. Would the recorder please introduce that?
The city council will not hold a public hearing to receive testimony on the budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2014, as approved by the City of Salem Budget Committee.
Thank you. We have a staff report?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Peterson. And I was just reminded to introduce myself. I'm Kelly Jacobs, the city's budget officer. Oregon public hearing law requires the Budget Committee to recommend a budget to the city council, which it did on May 7th, 2014. Changes made by the Budget Committee to the city manager's proposed budget are provided as Attachment 1 to the public hearing staff report. The Budget Committee's changes did not impact the fund-level appropriation authority as, as proposed by the city manager. The Budget Committee's fund-level recommended budget appears as Attachment 2 to the staff report and totals $519,104,950 in resources, $464,240,680 in expenditures, and an unappropriated ending balance of 40, or 54 million, excuse me, $54,864,270. The city council is required to hold a public hearing on the recommended budget. Notice of this evening's public hearing was published in the State's Journal on May 19th, 2014. Following the public hearing, staff recommends the city council deliberate on the recommended budget within the restrictions provided in law, which are: property taxes cannot be increased from the rate levied by the Budget Committee; no funds expenditures can be increased by more than 10%. Within these restrictions, the city council may make any changes to the recommend, recommended budget that it wishes to make. Staff also recommends, in addition to the City of Salem budget, which is detailed in the staff report. This change to the budget provides for the transfer of one full-time equivalent tech analyst position in the Public Works Department Water and Sewer Fund to the Information Technology Department General Fund. The changes in expenditure authority, unappropriated ending balance, and revenues described in the report support the position transfer. Following deliberation of the budget, the city council is asked to approve all changes to the budget this evening to allow staff to return with a resolution to adopt the budget on June 23rd, 2014. At that time, staff will ask the city council to amend the budget approval made this evening to include any rebudgeted purchase orders or carryover projects from fiscal year 2013-14, which city, city staff are currently identifying. A complete list of items to be included in the fiscal year 2014-15 budget will be provided to the city council on June 23rd, 2014. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Is anyone signed up for this one? Well, surprise, no one is signed up for this part, portion of public hearing. So I'll close the hearing. Counselor Nanki, do we have a motion?
I'm not quite sure, Madam Mayor, but, uh, I'll do my best.
Thank you.
Uh, I would move staff recommendation, which includes returning with a resolution to adopt the 2014-2015 City of Salem budget with the items addressed, uh, as item 2, A, B, C, um, as well as the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor Clem. Is there discussion? Counselor Dickey?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge that our guest counselor tonight was also our chair of our budget committee, so thank you very much. We had probably the most productive budget and, and efficient budget since I can recall being on the committee, so thanks so much and, um, it's great that you're here to kind of celebrate this with us.
Yay.
Thank you. All right. There's a motion on the floor. It's been moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor Clem. Was that right? Thank you. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. We now have special orders of business, uh, 5A, which was the election of a temporary chair for our June 9th city council meeting because I will be absent, as will, uh, Council President Chuck Bennett. So I would entertain a motion for the election of a temporary chairperson for the June 9th city council meeting. We need to have a motion that contains a nomination.
Yeah.
We do have to have someone sitting in this chair. All right. Nominations are open.
I, I nominate Counselor Brad Nanki for, uh, chairperson at the June 9th council meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Yes, it's been moved by Counselor Clem and seconded by Counselor Benars to nominate Counselor Brad Nanki to serve as, as mayor at the meeting on June 9th, 2014. Is there discussion? Counselor Dickey?
Uh, oh, did, um, does the maker of the motion need an opportunity to address the motion first?
Would the motion, oh, all right then. If not, then you may.
Okay. Well, I'd like to make a substitute motion.
All right.
Okay. I'd like to nominate Counselor Tesler to preside at the June 9th meeting.
All right. Is there a second to that motion?
Well, a second.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Dickey and seconded by Counselor Rogers to move to have Counselor Tesler serve as mayor for the June 9th meeting for the Salem City Council. In this case, uh, city attorney, what do we do next?
You would decide the substitute motion and Counselor Dickey has an opportunity to address her motion.
All right. So all those in favor of the substitute?
Counselor Dickey now has an opportunity to address the motion.
Oh, you do that right now. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Um, and with all deference to Counselor Nanki, who has, has done this before and would be great, um, Counselor Tesler will not be with us after, after the end of the year, so it might be a good opportunity because she will not, um, get this opportunity again, probably.
That's right. All right. Is there further discussion? All right. The motion on the floor made by Counselor Dickey and seconded by Counselor Rogers to nominate, uh, Counselor Tesler to serve as the acting mayor at the June 9th meeting. All those in favor of that motion, of the substitute motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Um, item 3.3A was pulled by Counselor Dickey and it will now be heard under special orders of business. Do we have a motion for that?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Dickey?
Yeah, let me see. I just want to, I'm going to like to read it here. Um, so I, I move that, um, city council authorize staff to apply for and accept transportation and growth management program grants from the Oregon Department of Transportation and Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development for the following two projects: State Street Refinement Plan and Salem River Crossing Bridge District's Integrated Land Use and Transportation Plan.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Dickey and seconded by, by Counselor Clausen? Okay, thank, I didn't see where that voice came from. By Counselor, all right, by Counselor Clausen. All right. Is there discussion? Counselor Dickey?
Yes, thank you so much. Um, I, I pulled this earlier in the evening. I see a lot of the people who had come in to address this issue were no longer here, but, um, I, I did want to just mention this briefly, um, that we actually, the part of this grant is to, um, develop a plan for potential bridgeheads for the, the East Salem and the West Salem neighborhoods for our potential third bridge. And I just wanted to mention, just kind of remind everyone that, um, council-directed staff to do this. One of the things I know we heard when we went out and we were talking with people last year about, um, the, the bridge and the potential for it was, um, you know, we heard the concern about those bridgeheads and what was going to happen at either end of the bridge. And so this provides an opportunity to, um, come up with a plan for some neighborhood redevelopment that could happen whether or not a bridge is ever developed, but this gives us a good, a good opportunity and hopefully some assurance to the residents in the area of what, what could possibly be there. And so then, when we're all not on council anymore because this project is, you know, many, many years out, um, there's at least something there that we've said, well, this is what we would like to see there and this is, you know, what we've heard from the residents. So I am, I just wanted to kind of highlight that, um, in light of some of the comments we heard earlier this evening.
Thank you. Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Gross, did you want to?
Yes, please. If I could ask Counselor Dickey, did your motion include to authorize the mayor to sign the letters of support for, for the, for the two projects as well?
Oh, yes, yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I was distracted.
Excellent. Because it's 10:11.
It's 10:11 and we're, we're running short on time. Yes, Counselor Rogers?
Just, just so I understand the motion, um, I, I think my concern is spending more money on the River Crossing on a plan that's so far out in the future that we've spent too much money already. And so if I understand what we're trying to spend money on today is, um, just what we could do to make improvements on the existing bridge? Is that where you're at?
No.
No. This, um, could you explain?
Yes. Um, this is to apply for a TGM grant, uh, to receive, if we're successful, funding that we could do, uh, bridgehead studies. So it's a study in the areas where the bridge would land about, um, how we can make sure that those areas are viable and revitalized as we go forward. Does that answer your question?
With a new bridge?
Yes. If there, yes.
If there ever is a new bridge.
That's right. And I think that the planning efforts will be positive for those neighborhoods, whether or not there's a new bridge, but when, uh, council had many, many deliberations and discussions about that third bridge and the bridge alternative, and one of the things the neighborhood said to us is, uh, and to counselors, is that, you know, how do we make sure positive things happen in these areas? And so this is a, a reflection of their concern and wanting to, uh, spend some time really evaluating what are options and, and how do we make sure that the things that council and the community want to have happen there do happen.
We have a motion on the floor, as I recall.
Yes.
Counselor Tes, Counselor Dickey, did you have a comment?
Benars.
No, all right. Counselor Benars, thank you.
I just want to make sure it's right, is this a staff recommendation that we're voting on? Okay, thanks.
All right. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right. Motion carries with Counselor Rogers registering a nay vote. Thank you. We have no unfinished business tonight and I just draw your attention, there's one item on, in the information reports.
Addition?
And there's the addition of the World War II memorial.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was five B. That's what happens when I look at the original agenda and not the revised agenda. All right. That is, I believe, going to be introduced by Counselor Clem. Is that right?
It is. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Um, with council's indulgence and knowing that it's late, I'll, I'll be briefer than I plan to be, but I do have just a couple of minutes of, uh, video. Mr. Jaffe has kindly waited all night to, uh, to, to say a few comments, but I would move that council authorize $5,000 from contingency reserve general fund accounts to be a financial sponsor for the World War II memorial being constructed at the state Capitol Fairgrounds. If you could go ahead and, and start the short video. We chopped it way down, so to the makers of this video, apologize, but our time is limited.
I joined up the National Guard. This was fought in a lot of part 1939. I enlisted three months after I turned 17. War was still on.
It was not something that you had to do, it was something that you wanted to do.
It was the thing to do back then. It was your duty. I lied about my age. I was 15. War times, I wanted to fight in the war before it was over.
I was 19. I wanted to serve the country.
We felt sorry for the people who didn't have the opportunity to serve.
About 150,000 Oregonians served in the war.
Thirty-seven-hundred-and-fifty gave their lives.
And they did it, Mr. Dennis Abell, for our country and for the freedoms that we have.
A good friend of mine, fraternity brother initiated with me and he wrote me what they call V-mail. It isn't very pretty over here, he said. Then he said, "I never knew how much I wanted to live till I got over here." Well, he didn't live much longer. When I tell you that story, how many more stories just like that? And that's what war's all about.
Meanwhile, I manually fast-forward here.
I was in Ojima. Mortar hit fairly close to me and it cut the nerves so I didn't have any pain in my arm and also blew all the skin off my chest. The only time I cried during battle was carrying me off the battlefield. I looked up and saw the Marines raising the flag. Seeing the American flag raised at that time has overwhelmed me.
I really started this process.
Through the hard work of a lot of people, uh, they've come up with a very compelling design for it.
The memorial will reside in what's called Wilson Park on the corner of Court and Cottage on the Capitol grounds. on the Capitol grounds. We've designed it to become part of the park, to flow evenly with the pathways and the look of the Capitol building. The footprint will be 75 foot square. At the center of this footprint will be a 33-foot-high, five-sided obelisk. Thirty-three feet high because Oregon's the 33rd state of the nation.
And I think that's appropriate. Some symbolism, but it's a symbolism beyond what our eyes will see.
Along two sides of the memorial will be low, black granite walls with the names of the fallen.
We'll also have, on the grounds, which is all granite, a world map.
And in that map will be notations for each theater of war in which we fought. And I know that the look on their face will make all this effort well worth it.
I'd like to see that built immediately, before we all die.
I'm going to hit the big nine in February, so you better hurry. You better go raise that money quickly.
I'd like to come when they unveil it. I'd probably visit it two or three times more. You go there and you see a guy's name, it makes a difference.
I think it's very significant.
Sure, I got a second to my motion. Second, thank you. If I could speak to my motion.
Yes, would you please?
Madam Mayor, thank you. Again, I apologize for bringing this forward, but this project is due to be dedicated June 6th, and they are on the very last, very, very last part of the fundraising on this. And I've been gone for the last three weeks, or I would have brought it sooner, but I want you to note that this is, why Salem? Why should Salem contribute? It's, we're the capital city, this is a memorial that's being erected here. We have other memorials to other efforts, but it just seems like the city ought to be a partner with the state, with the county, with all of the other veterans and organizations that have contributed, and I wouldn't want Salem to not be involved somehow. And again, I apologize, we're getting near where the project's being dedicated, but I've asked Mr. Lou Jaffe to just make a few comments if he could, and then answer any questions.
Well, that would be fine, and we welcome you and we appreciate you staying so late tonight to be able to talk with us. And I want to say to Council Clem, no apology is ever needed when you bring an item of such importance to us, so please know that I, for one, am very pleased that we are going to have this opportunity to participate. Yes, please.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Mayor and councilors. Thank you for entertaining this consideration, particularly at this late hour. I, too, am from Portland, and I happen to share the lady's opinion about the streets of Portland. But a few brief comments about this memorial. It is being built as we speak, as I'm sure you're aware. We've raised a little over $1.2 million from individuals, from businesses, from foundations, from Native American tribes, from a lot of veterans groups. Donations have ranged from $1 to $250,000. The state of Oregon's contributed, several counties have contributed. It's an extraordinarily meaningful project for those of us in the veterans community, and not just folks of my age, but certainly of the World War II community. We're going to be dedicating this June 6th. We expect well over 1,000 people to be in attendance. We're getting emails right and left, concerned about parking, what have you. So I want to make just a couple of comments. I mean, the memorial in and of itself is going to be a beautiful memorial, but it will not be a stagnant memorial. It will have technology embedded in the memorial, QR codes that will be accessible with these little devices for those that know how to use them. I don't. But you'll be able to access information from the memorial, also through a touchscreen kiosk, to access our website and access information on thousands upon thousands of Oregon World War II veterans. That is available now. Down the road, we will have audio, we'll have video, we'll have stories of oral history of Oregon's World War II veterans in an exciting multimedia format, so young people will be able to learn in perpetuity. It is our hope and our belief that this will become an educational destination, that once, you know, long past June 6th, people will come here. We've got a lot of support from, you know, history teachers, school associations, folks that have an interest in teaching and in preserving our shared history, particularly of a time when our nation was united, and it's a great learning opportunity. It would be terrific to have the City of Salem's support on this. We've got a plaque in perpetuity, it'll be on the side of the memorial for donations of $5,000 or more. We'd love to have the City of Salem's name on that plaque. I thank you for your time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, we appreciate you being with us this evening. Are there any questions from councilors? Councilor Dickey?
Thanks, I'm not quite sure who this is for, and thank you for coming down and staying so late. My question, when I saw this, and I think I sort of mentioned it to Dan earlier, was there, obviously, other jurisdictions have been involved in this process, and we really have received little or no information about it. Why are we coming in so late into this project?
Well, I'd like to respond that actually, we had been receiving information on a pretty regular basis, maybe if the fault is anyone's, it's mine for not having shared that further with the council. I sit on the Capitol Planning Commission, and the dreams and hopes for this memorial were brought to that commission well over a year ago, and then the actual fundraising began and the construction began on the Capitol Mall. So it's probably just the fault of lack of communication to get that information out through the council, and I'll make a note that it would be better to bring that information in a much more timely manner. Thanks.
So in terms of though, I mean, obviously, other jurisdictions have been asked to contribute. I'm just wondering why we're kind of being asked this late and why we weren't in earlier?
Right, and if I could respond to that just a little bit. When I first became aware of this, I think it was in January, when I was back from my leave, and the request at that time was to waive the permits and the parking fees, which we don't, the construction parking, which we don't ever do, and I think the group was still in the process of raising funds, and so that came to us a few times, and the recommendation was to get it to a city councillor who could come, and although we don't waive the fees, and that certainly were not what the council motion is, who could come and make a motion to council to see if we could take money from general fund contingency to do this. And I think Mr. Jaffe would like to say something.
And if I may just make a comment to that as well, we're an all-volunteer organization, there's no staff, and we kind of went where we thought the fishing was best at the time. You know? I mean, if somebody said, "Call this person," we called that person. And, you know, and we went wherever that led us, and we just didn't have a lead into the City of Salem at the time.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Tesler?
I think this is a great idea. I'm a little concerned about taking this money out of contingency, because contingency is for contingencies. And can we afford this? Is there a better fund that we could take this money out of? How about council support?
We are in that budget very tight through the end of the year, and we were concerned that if we charge it to that account by the end of the fiscal year, we may have to come back and ask you to take money from general fund contingency to put back into the account. So I think this is the most straightforward way to do it, the contingencies for unexpected, you know, situations, and this is, I think, one of those. I mean, it's a $5,000 amount. I would feel differently if it were $50,000 or $100,000, but it's a fairly small amount of money, and at this time of the fiscal year, it's just hard to find some of those funds.
Well, I would just caution that there's a lot of people who would like to have a little, small bit of money.
That's right.
For all kinds of different things, and I'm not devaluing your thing, because I get it about this memorial, but I, I'm just worried about setting precedent, because pretty soon there's going to be a parade of people come down here and want money for all kinds of things.
Right.
So I would just caution, that's all.
Councilor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'd asked earlier whether or not that budget had any funds left in it. Although I would like, if there are funds at the turn, and I suppose that would be a substitute motion rather than contingency, contingency funds over and above any funds that are the balance of the council ceremonial funds at the close of the business year. Would be using contingency now until that time, and then transferring that, I think they both go to ending fund balance, but.
They do, and Ms. Jacobs, did you want to make a comment?
Councilor Nanki, while I've got you on the mic, would you mind making a motion to extend the meeting?
Hey, that's a wonderful thing, I'll give another 15 minutes, we still have a couple ordinances to second.
If I could, I, you know, it's taken me a few minutes to decide whether to say something, but under item 10, I would like to.
We still need to vote on the extension.
I'm sorry, I have to do this procedurally, I'm sorry. So we have a motion on the floor, I believe Council Nanki made a motion, and who seconded? Council Clem, to extend the meeting by 10 minutes. All those in favor, say aye. 15 minutes, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
And my question is whether or not we could go more than 15, but we can decide that in a minute.
Okay, and so the motion on the floor is to, I believe, to provide the $5,000 from the contingency fund.
Right, and I was in the process of making a substitute motion to.
Okay, why don't you make your substitute motion, and then we'll rule on that.
Which would be to use contingency funds being replaced by any, the ending balance in the council ceremony?
Actually, when we start the next fiscal year, we start with another $2.5 million in contingency, so.
It doesn't matter.
So it just changes the, this would just change the ending fund balance.
But it would be, to me, that fund is kind of meant for those type of things. It would have been nice if we could actually budget this at the beginning of the budget year, but that didn't happen, so I, again, don't like using contingency funds, and if we can minimize our use of them, even if it has no net effect, I would still prefer it to come out of another budget location as much as possible.
Okay, okay. All right, so the motion on the floor, yes, Councilor Bennerz?
I'll make it short. I appreciate all the wrangling back and forth of where the money's going to come from and so forth. I am, as we said, a conservative when it comes to money matters. This is a no-brainer to me, and if I had the wherewithal, we'd be giving the full 15 so they can close up their books and get it on with, they deserve, those vets of World War II deserve everything that that memorial's going to represent, and a million times more. So I don't think we have 15,000 in the contingent budget, but I think 5,000 would be well worth the, little support, and it is little support that we can give our vets, our World War II vets.
Thank you. All right, the motion on the floor, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Which was the main motion, because the second died for lack of a second. Just to put that on the record, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, we are at the point in the meeting for the ordinances. Would the city recorder please introduce the first reading?
Ordinance Bill number 914, amending the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan, expanding the urban growth boundary, a component of the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan, and amending SRC 64.005.
Thank you. And Councilor Nanki, do you have a motion?
Oh, I do, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move that council hold a public hearing on ordinance bill number 9-14, amending the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan and SRC Chapter 64, to include Kaiser Rapids Park in the urban growth boundary.
Thank you. Is there a second? It's been moved by Council Nanki and seconded by Council Tesler. Is there discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We have a second reading. Would the recorder please take the roll call vote for that?
Madam Mayor, we'll need a motion to adopt a proposed engrossed ordinance bill.
Oh, all right, thank you.
And then I'll read the engrossed title.
Mm-hmm. Are you introducing it, then? Or do we simply move it?
Well, I'll introduce it after, would that be appropriate?
After the motion, okay. Councilor Nanki?
So the motion would be as staff recommendation to adopt proposed engrossed ordinance bill number 5-14, for, to provide for an emergency clause making the ordinance effective upon recording, and proceed to second reading for enactment in the matter vacating a portion of the public right of way located west of Front Street and north of Pringle Creek.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved by Council Nanki and seconded by Council Clausen. Is there discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
So now I'll go ahead and read the engrossed.
And we have, I'm sorry? Now you'll do the roll call, okay?
I'll call the, I'm sorry, I'll read the title and then call roll. Engrossed Ordinance Bill number 514, vacating a portion of public right of way located west of Front Street and north of Pringle Creek, and declaring an emergency. Councilor Clem?
Aye.
Councilor Bennett? Is absent. Councilor Tesler?
Aye.
Councilor Nanki?
Aye.
Councilor Clausen?
Aye.
Councilor Dickey?
Aye.
Councilor Rogers?
Aye.
Councilor Bennerz?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye. Thank you. And, okay, we have one person who has signed up.
I actually have one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I actually have one more ordinance, second reading.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Ordinance Bill number 614, relating to amending the Salem Transportation System Plan, a component of the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan, and amending SRC 64.005. Councilor Bennett is absent. Councilor Tesler?
Aye.
Councilor Nanki?
Aye.
Councilor Clausen?
Aye.
Councilor Dickey?
Aye.
Councilor Rogers?
Aye.
Councilor Bennerz?
Aye.
Councilor Clem?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye. Thank you. All right, we have one person signed up, Michael Johnson, for a public testimony.
I will make sure that Councilor Nanki does not have to extend.
Yay.
You're receiving a handout. Oh, Michael Johnson, I am the chairman for the East Salem Suburban Neighborhood Association, commonly called ESNA. We are that little white space on your map that is just outside the city limits, but inside most of the urban growth, well, inside the urban growth boundary. We straddle State Street, we run between Highway 22 and Center Street, and extend out into the county. The purpose for me being here tonight is to ask the city not to spend any money, but to approve, in some fashion, the use of 23 power poles, as shown on your map there, eight of them being on Center Street, eight being on Auburn, five of them being on State Street, and two being in the 100 block of 37th Avenue Southeast. ESNA is in the process of lighting up East Salem. The sheriff's office has told us over and over and over that lights reduce crime and increases safety. We found that in our, in our area, we needed 250 lights on existing streets that have no lights. Twenty-two of those have already been installed, the neighbors are delighted. We're in the process of doing the remaining 228, and in doing that, PGE notified me a few weeks ago that some of the lights, we were talking specifically about State Street and those five, were in the jurisdiction of the city once the city took possession, jurisdiction of the land, knowing as the mushroom plant at the annexation in 2010. In talking with a city traffic engineer, we find that under Salem Revised Code, the city has to own the lights. ESNA is asking the city to, asking the council to find a way to waive that requirement that the lights would be installed by PGE, owned by PGE, on PGE poles, be administered under East Salem Service District, Lighting District, Rule 19. Lighting District rules. The people of the lighting district would then pay for the operation of those lights and show up as a line item on their property tax statements.
Are there questions by any of the counselors? All right. Thank you. We appreciate the information you've brought to us. Thank you very much. All right. I believe that our city manager would like to have a few moments with the statement.
And Ms. Kessler. Counselor Kessler wants to say something.
Counselor Kessler.
Thanks. I haven't been a miss in a long time.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Make me feel young. I would like... This situation is... Has a lot of moving parts, and I would like to ask if staff can work with Mr. Johnson and find a solution through this, because I think there is a solution here, but I think we're not going to figure it out in five minutes tonight.
No, no.
And so is that okay for me to ask for that? Because I think that there's some good discussion to be had here. Unfortunately, the discussion came on Friday, and there wasn't much I could do on Friday and a holiday weekend. So I think this... Can we follow up with this? And can staff come back?
Yes. And Mr. Bechtel, will you be the one who's getting with Mr. Johnson?
Because I think we can find a way through this, and I think hopefully we can make both parties happy. Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Yes?
Just a quick note. The city would incur no liability.
Thank you very much. All right. We're going to move along to Item 10, which is new business, and the city manager has some comments.
Yes. Thank you. And, you know, normally I don't respond to things that are said in a, you know, under public comment in a public hearing. But there's been so much misinformation and anonymous allegations and outrageous statements, and frankly, maybe slanderous statements made, that I think it's important that... I want to make sure the council knows, anyone who's still watching this late at night, to know that every dollar the city has spent under the EID is accounted for, is tracked, is public information, is available to anyone who wants to have it. A lot of the information I've seen come out in the last few days, and on Mr. Heinz' blog is anonymous, not factual, even comments that were made tonight about how much money's been spent on city staff, and that is absolutely not true. And that there are only two property owners who've been on the steering committee, none of that information is true. And what I'd like to do, maybe more for public confidence than anything else, is to prepare a report that'll go to city council and will have available about what has actually happened. I want to thank the steering committee, who have been hanging in there the whole time, didn't want to get distracted by negativity, have been working hard on the things that they felt that there was common agreement about that would help the downtown. They've worked very hard. We have 28 people who've signed up to be block captains. We have two-way communication, I think for the first time at least in almost 10 years I've been here, with people in downtown. So I regret that, you know, we had 35 people, 35% who remonstrated, 64% did not. And I regret that their voices won't be able to continue to grow and be heard. And I'm hoping that they're able to find ways to continue to work on wonderful things about our downtown. I think I've always felt that we have a wonderful downtown, and we have great businesses and great properties. And I think, as Mr. Gaylor said, there's more that we agree on than we disagree on. But it's always been a question of kind of who has control of the funds. And it is the city's responsibility, under the assessment, to make sure that those funds are spent according to law and appropriately. We've always had that responsibility, no matter who's been in charge of the EID or whether we're running it ourselves, as I know council knows. So it's, you know, a lot of people spend a lot of time and done a lot of good work, and we'll be able to, with the funds that are left, continue the programs that we have right now, at least some of them, through probably into early fall. And then those funds won't be available for those programs after that. So we'll see how it goes forward at that time. But I just wanted to make sure you know, and the public knows, anyone who's still listening, that these allegations are untrue.
Counselor Nanki?
Yeah, just a couple of things. When we first started this process, and I recognize her by picture, but I can't recall her name, she said, "It's time for Salem to wake up from this dirt bath," was the onset of the first EID, because it was nasty. And inside of that report, it'd be nice to... Because you had just mentioned as far as what funds left and what they'll actually do is what next, which was one of the questions that came up as well. Where do we stand? Will we be involved with trying to muster some support to do anything anywhere? Or is it basically going to be starting to add some soil into the tub again? So... But other than that, I would vote the same way I voted previously, again and again and again. I mean, we've seen the issues as they came by, and so I take offense to people calling me names as well. And no, I didn't read an email or a blog. So just to add that in at the end.
Yeah. Thank you. Counselor Rogers, did you have a comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to thank Linda, too, for the work that she's done and the reports she's given. When I first came on council 13 years ago, one of the people I met when I was running for council was the Downtown Association. I made an appointment and met with Randy Curtis. And in those days, they were talking about how to fund Christmas lights downtown. And then we went from there, we went to these flower pots that we had downtown and how to get rid of those flower pots. And I don't know that, you know, 100% of the people are going to be happy 100% of the time. And I think that's what happens to us, that we get caught up in that. And I think we're caught up in it today. I felt like I got my little ear chewed out tonight, and I feel innocent, but I know we're doing the right thing, and so thank you for the work you did.
Of course. Of course. I would do it again also.
Correct. Counselor Benars?
I would be admis at this point. Obviously, it was mentioned this evening that I chaired a committee that put the EID in the first place. I have not kept track of it up to this point to see where the community has been. I mean, it's something that we did a long time ago, I think in 2008 is when I did that. But I do believe in it. I do believe it's a good answer to some many problems that we have downtown. I also chaired the downtown that put the two-hour time limited parking. It's another thing that I miss about downtown personally. There's some changes happening downtown, and we need to address those changes, either in the political will or the demise of the flower baskets in the parking walls that might fall down. We need to take care of these things, take our chin, keep on going, move up, and just come up with some better ideas. I think it'll come back. I'm sure it'll come back. It's come back again and again, and it'll come back one more time. Let's just make it work this time, whenever it comes up. That I'm speaking of another downtown association, or some entity that makes our downtown, keeps it clean, puts on the events, and does all the rest of the thing. I really believe our downtown is worth looking and investing in. Thanks.